Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the BOC meeting. I'm calling to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Ms. Jacobs, roll call, please.
Mayor LaHuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Terapini.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Commissioner Vaticiottis.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Lisa Bradford from the Presbyterian Church on the Bayou, following by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Patient Creator God, we invite you to not be an observer here, but a participant. We know, Lord, that you know every heart and every thought, and we ask that each one here would be guided by kindness and generosity and inclusion. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Let us lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be advised that item number 16 has been pulled from the agenda, and we'll begin our BOC meeting today with a special presentation in Tarpon Springs Stormwater. Mr. Licures, Tony Morello will please come to the podium to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm Tony Manello, the Streets and Stormwater Supervisor for our Public Works Department for Tarpon Springs. This year was our first poster contest, okay? It's kind of a tongue twister. It's entitled "My Tarpon Springs Clean Waters: Stormwater Pollution Prevention Poster Contest." Each year moving forward, we will ask 4th and 5th grade students from various schools in Tarpon Springs to show their creativity and talents by creating a poster which displays their thoughts and ideas in the areas of pollution prevention, clean water benefits, animal and vegetation habitat impacts of stormwater runoff, to our beaches, our river, our bayous, and our ponds. Environmental awareness of young students is and will be part of our maintaining our community's clean waters and assure the sustainability of these natural resources for them, their enjoyment into the future. We're here tonight to acknowledge and award three talented students from the 4th and 5th grades at Tarpon Springs Elementary School with a certificate of achievement and Visa gift cards in the amounts of $25 for 3rd place, $50 for 2nd place, and $100 for our 1st place winner. Okay, without further ado, Mr. Mayor, would you like to come up and make the presentations? Students, when your name is announced, please come up and receive your award from our mayor. All right, we're going to start off with our 3rd place award goes to 4th grade student, Unfortunately, our 2nd place winner could not make it this evening, Destiny Powell, a 5th grader at Tarpon Springs Elementary. I will be delivering her awards to her tomorrow, so I don't know if she'd be more excited about that or being the last day of school, but I'll be out there tomorrow morning. Good job. And our 1st place award this year goes to our 4th grade student, Mr. Bryson Grant. Good job, Bryson. By the way, ladies and gentlemen, their artwork is displayed in the foyer of the auditorium for viewing. We're also planning on keeping it probably somewhere in the front, in the hallway of City Hall for at least a month, about 30 days, so you're welcome. And it may even go on tour. I spoke with Diane Wood about possibly putting it in the Cultural Arts Center or the Heritage Museum, so you may see it around, but...
Congratulations. Congratulations. School for participating and winning the poster contest. This is really a good program, very good program, learning about the environment, to protect the environment and the benefits of a clean water. And I will thank Mr. Manero for doing that, and next year's going to be the better. Thank you so much. I'd like to make a correction that the item that I was pulled, item number 16, was pulled was from the first, from the previous agenda, not from the agenda that we're working on tonight, but it was the previous one, so that item is not going to be discussed tonight. Before we go to the public comments, I'd like to remind to everyone that in order to have a productive meetings, with professionalism and based on the city code, all public comments must be directed only to the Chair of the meeting in a professional manner with respect, without our personal attacks, and I want to thank you for your cooperation. We now go into the presentation. Item number 1 is the hurricane season. Excuse me. If anyone has any comments, please come forward to the podium and stage in a minute. You address, and you'll be given four minutes. Also, if you have any comments on the... On the public comments as well, if you have any comments that you want to make in regards to the presentation, the heraldier, go ahead and do that as well.
Is it public comments?
It's public comments. All the items are not going to be discussed tonight, and also, if you want to make any comments for the presentation that we had just a minute ago, go ahead and do that as well.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I know we pulled the pickleball, but this particular comments that I need to make is somewhat regarded to that because it hasn't been, it's not on the agenda tonight. But it also has to do with having this ant clothe project that was sort of approved. I've been doing some research on the comprehensive plan, and I don't know, I don't know how nicely to say this, but there is so many words in here that just contradict us taking green space away. I have probably six or seven pages of our charter of ordinances, and I don't know if we're all privy to what's in here. So, you know, one of the things, I'll just read to you, the city has very few areas of upland vegetation remaining. As development pressures continue on remaining vacant lands, it's critical to strike a balance between private property rights and preserving remaining wildlife habitat. If you read the report, we would be infringing on so many different wildlife habitat that I just don't understand how this even came to a decision. Same thing comes with this pickleball situation. So I'm just going to touch base with a couple of paragraphs because I don't want to sit here and bore everybody with what I had to read. All wetlands which are located along the Ant Cloat River should be designated for preservation. One area of particular importance is located within the Oak Brook-Chisholm Annexation, adjacent to the north shore of the Ant Cloat River between Pinellas and US Highway 19. But the key word is, everything on the Ant Cloat River is important. And again, these are all things that I just don't know how they're getting to be made decisions on. You know, as a candidate for a city commission position, I've been hearing people telling me that people from the north want to change Tarpon Springs. I came down here because I like the way Tarpon Springs was and is and do not want to change it, nor do most people. So I don't understand why we're going to change it to make it more like Tampa or like a... Tarpon is supposed to be a mini-city, and I know somebody doesn't like, people don't like hearing that, but that's what it is. It's a mom and pop place. It's not meant for big development. I read something in the sustainability area where it says we need to promote sustainable economic development, energy efficient, land use. I'm reading about how we're overloading our sewer system, our water system. Right now, we have a situation where due to drought, we can't keep up with the, with the water, for watering lawns, and yet we're going to go and instill more and more areas. Do we have that in a plan? This comprehensive plan is not being followed. It was written 2019, it was written 2020. There were addendums to it. As I read it, I sit there and just scratching my head saying, does anybody up there read it before you guys are voting on it? And I know you do, so I'm not looking to attack anybody. But you have to follow it. We have to encourage local job growth so that residents may choose to work and shop. This is what it says here. You know, I just put little bullet points, and I'm sitting there reading this and saying, wow, this is not the route that we're going. I just don't want to see where we're just growing and growing, and where is the end? You know, will we have enough water? Will we have enough sewage? Will we have, you know, I'm getting complaints that the garbage, the garbage are not picking up fast enough, so...
Thank you.
I just wanted to touch base with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for learning the comprehensive plan. Next person.
Can I follow if this might be similar to what you...
No, let's just...
My name is John Stavros. I live here, live in New York and live in Los Angeles, and last time I was here was like about two years ago, to complain about an issue which affected my neighborhood, my house, and the people living around me. And that issue is basically, if Tarpon is supposed to be a tree city, as there's a plaque out there that says it's a tree city, and the gentleman just simply said that, including the mayor, said that this is a protect environmental, we're again aligned. Because I've witnessed, again, in front of my house devastation taking place in the heart of Tarpon Springs, which is the most beautiful place in Tarpon Springs, is across my house, which I've preserved for 40 years, fed the birds, watched out for the alligators so they don't come to our side. So my thing is, in the 70 years of my life, I've traveled all over the world. I own a museum in Kingston, New York, where the government just gave us $20 million to restore the entire city, to develop it professionally with new sewer lines. What I've noticed is last week, and I went across from my building, my house, which I brought my father here, my mother, my two sisters, my brother, we owned the property on 106 Gulf Road and the huge lot behind, which we did not build for 40 years because I've been watching the birds, the ospreys. They come there, they feed, they do their thing on my cars, I wash it. But again, I'm here to tell you that what they're doing across the street, which is the heart of Kingston, is wrong. There's no sewer lines there. How are they going to come into my property across the street and put a sewer line, a sewer system? Who gave them a permission to build that I don't know what they're going to build? The neighborhood doesn't know what they're going to build. Is there going to be a 7-Eleven? Is there going to be a building that's going to stay vacant without a certificate of occupancy like some other monster building down on Gulf Road somewhere that we all know? So the bottom line is, again, about two years ago, I came to this room to give a speech. I'm usually the person that gives speeches for professional soccer teams, in art exhibitions. I give speeches that are heard and are listened to by people around the world through what I call social media or newspapers or television. But the problem that we have here, nobody in our neighborhood was notified of them cutting the trees, of them making noise where I'm writing a script, and all of a sudden there's construction taking place. There's snakes that are coming across. It's a wildlife preserve. There's alligators in there. There's turtles that are endangered species that their homes have been destroyed. The osprey don't have a place to go catch their fish. We all know the area because it's been covered by trees, and all the tourists that come to Tarpon, they look at it and they go, wow, this is beautiful. It's the last wildlife preserve. What is going on there? Nobody knows. The sign states, and there should be a sign there, that says this is going to be a building. I'm a builder. I built Andy Warhol's factory in New York. I built six apartments and a museum. There is no sign there that says what is taking place. All I've seen is, they come, they mark the land, and they're going to put a sewer line there, because I have two nephews that are licensed plumbers, and my brother was also a plumber in New York. So when I see markings coming into my property, it's time for me to go. And I've been living here quietly for over 40 years. I do my thinking in Tarpon Springs. It's what you guys have to do now, okay? Because it's the last of the wild areas that needs to be preserved. How far are they going to go down? Will they go down to the bayou?
Sir, excuse me, your time has expired, but if you would, please, get with the City Manager tomorrow, and he will give you detailed information of what's going on with the property there. Okay?
All right. Well, that's what I try to do, and they have no plans as of yet. I asked for that.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
So for the city planning, then you suggest?
The City Manager will talk to you about it in detail.
All right. So that, how do we stop that from continuing to all of a sudden ruin that? I mean, it's your, it's your responsibility. You're the mayor.
Thank you so much.
How do we stop and prevent them from continuing to destroy wetlands that is the heart of Tarpon Springs? If you destroy that area, there's no wetlands...
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alexander Thorstensen, A-L-E-K-S-A-N-D-E-R, last name Thorstensen, T-H-O-R-S-T-E-N-S-E-N. I'm a student in Public Policy and Administration at St. Petersburg College. I'm originally from Trondheim, Norway, and I live down in Seminole 10065 Addison Way, Seminole, Florida, 33772. But I come up here and visit Tarpon Springs all the time. It's one of my favorite places in the area, and it's a place I take people whenever they come in from out of town. Today I would like to talk about Amendment 2122 today, that's later, addressing the rezoning and land use amendment for the property at 41680 US Highway 19.
Sir?
Yeah.
That will be discussed later. Right now is for items, I mean, for anything that is not be covered by the agenda.
Sure.
Can you wait, please?
Yeah, sure. It's fine. Thank you very much.
Before my minutes count, I would like to advise I have Lori Shirakas donating time, and I do feel it was cutting off our time by not allowing us to speak comments after the presentation while the kids were here.
I'm sorry, so who is the person that's giving time to you?
Lori Shirakas.
Okay. Which, so you got six minutes?
Yeah, but I would have had four before and six. So let us begin this evening with Psalm 33:5. The Lord loves righteousness and justice. The earth is full of his unfailing love. Psalm 37:28-33. For the Lord loves the just and will not forsake his faithful ones. They will be protected forever, but the offspring of the wicked will be cut off. The righteous will inherit the land and dwell in it forever. The mouth of the righteous man utters wisdom, and his tongue speaks what is just. The law of his God is in his heart; his feet do not slip. The wicked lie in wait for the righteous, seeking their very lives. But the Lord will not leave them in their power, or let them be condemned when brought to trial. Wait for the Lord and keep his way, and he will exalt you to possess the land. When the wicked are cut off, you will see it. Now, I do have to say that it was honorable to have the kids speak about clean water. And if you look at Aronella's and Dyson's and Bryson's and Destiny, Destiny, they're looking for their destiny. Look at their pictures. It's about preserving the earth. Yet this board always finds ways to pave over the earth. And as Mr. Stavros mentioned, that's Mylan Homes, and they own like six lots there. Because I looked it up, because I saw what's going on. It's just east of the First Baptist Church on Gulf Road, and it abuts Legion Park where you're going to be buying some property back there. And it is full of ospreys and alligators, and across the street from me is an empty lot, and I saw three gopher tortoises there. So you're driving the animals out of their homes, what, to pave over Tarpon Springs, to cut it up? You have a flag outside Arbor City. Yet the hypocrisy of this board turns around every time they got an opportunity to cut Tarpon up and pave it. Eagle Crest, I think that's the name of the property on the northeast corner of Belcher and Klosterman. Go by and look at it. It's denuded, big sand piles, probably some big mulch piles back there where they mulched the trees. For what? Progress? More tax money? And what's going on out by the fire station, what they call it Riverbend? All the trees were cut out there, and also out on East Lake, where you want to do the same thing? And don't get me started on Ant Cloat Harbor, where there's over 2,000 trees and you want to take over 1,000 out. And then Commissioners worry about whether it's a Viburnum this or a Viburnum that. The hypocrisy of this board is unfailing. Psalm 106:3. Blessed are those who maintain justice, who constantly do what is right. And then lastly, Proverbs 28:5. Oh, wait. Yeah, I read that one. Evil men do not understand justice, but those who seek the Lord understand it fully. Why is this board always finding ways to destroy the earth, yet they talk out of the side of their mouth about preserving it and awarding kids prizes for their... side of their mouth about preserving it and awarding kids prizes for their environmental duties? This is their destiny, and it's our job to protect it and save it. And it's your job to do that also. Not to be beholden to the interests of Mylan Homes, or Morgan Group, or what's the guy, David something, who's building the houses out there off of Klosterman. Y'all can't cut Tarpon up fast enough. And then again, lastly, as I mentioned last time, you're cutting participation out of your meetings. Again, another meeting with no Zoom or no remote calls. We've already entered into the new age. You've allowed it, yet you cut it out because you don't want to hear people talking and hear, giving their opinions. This board continues to find ways to ignore the will of the people and their voices. You do it for your own interests, your friends' interests, special interests, and you say you're doing it for Tarpon, but you're not. You're cutting up Tarpon in little pieces by little pieces, death by little razor cuts. And eventually, as Mr. Stavros says, all the animals, where are they gonna go? They're part of our community, too. So, quit the hypocrisy. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So far, we've heard from three citizens that are not happy with the way they're governing this town. And when we had the Anklod Harbor hearing, there were hundreds of people who spoke out against that. Hundreds! And Mr. Eisner is correct, many people are upset with the fact that you're wanting to pave over all these wetlands and destroy the environment, add all this traffic to the roads. And it turns out, that Hayes Road study, it's gonna cost between, what, two, two to four million? You gonna make the citizens here pay for that road, for that development? Or is this the death nail in that Morgan Group-Anklod Harbor project? Are they gonna try and find another way around it? They're already losing in court. Trying to pave over wetlands, Mr. Eisner is correct, it's against the comp plan. And we can fight every single one of those wetlands to save them. The Army Corps, takes a long time to do that. Takes a long, long, long time. So, we live here. Morgan Group and their people do not. So, we will be here to defend the land. And whoever this other developer is, trying to destroy right down the street from my house, think again. That ain't gonna happen either. You're also not gonna get that Keystone property. You keep doing things wrong, we keep catching you at it, and you keep losing. And that's what's gonna continue to happen, unless you change your ways. And do like Peter Delaco said, listen to the people. Listen to what they would like you to do. Don't cut people off, don't ignore their emails, threaten not to read emails, not to allow people to Zoom in or call in anymore. What is that about? We all have first-minute rights here, and you constantly deny those rights. It's not right, what you're doing. You have to change what you're doing. It's not too late. It's not. You guys will get another vote on that project, you can shut it down. You don't have to lose in court, or lose at all the agencies that are gonna get filed lawsuits against FDOT, SWF MUD. You know how long that's gonna take? You really want to waste everybody's time with that? Waste the city's energy on that? All you gotta do is say no to that project. And tell these other developer clowns that they're not allowed to tear this place up either. Constantly having to get up here and remind you. People don't like destruction of their town. They don't like the direction it is going, and the traffic. Talk about the wastewater, I mean, the roads were flooding in Tarpon Springs. Flooding from rain. Why aren't we working on that? And all the pavement that you put down creates more flooding. Doing what you're doing, folks, you gotta start doing what the people want, you gotta do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? If you do, please come forward.
Panigotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. These are all my own thoughts and expressions. With that said, I will have Annie Samarkis and Sylvia Eowanu donate their minutes.
You ladies agree with that? You have eight minutes.
Here, my fellow Tarponites. First, want to start off with, you know, we saw Mr. Tony Kolianos walk in here first, sit over here, then all of a sudden, we've seen this imposing figure come sit right behind me. So, who was it? It was the henchman himself, Jim Kolianos. I don't know why he decided to sit right behind me when we got a whole auditorium full of people, but that's okay. But as long as no one personally attacks me, then we won't have to revisit November 1979. I want to look forward to the city of Tarpon Springs and better the community. Now, I would like to take this time to announce my candidacy for Tarpon Springs Commissioner, seat four, and I'm looking forward to the experience and opportunity. I plan to improve your everyday lives, and most importantly, implement the comprehensive plan for the current and future state of Tarpon Springs. I want to focus on key issues and ways to better the community. Now, first, I done some research about the sale of fireworks in Tarpon Springs, and the Tarpon Springs marching band has 12 tents for fundraising, but none of those 12 tents are in Tarpon. I called Joe D'Angelo from Phantom Fireworks because I was interested in raising money for my campaign if I could, and he advised me, there's an ordinance in Tarpon Springs to prohibit the sale of fireworks. I can go buy fireworks from Walmart and win Dixie in town, but can't buy fireworks in town to support our marching band? That doesn't make sense. Let's change the ordinance to allow the sale of fireworks, so Tarponites can buy fireworks in town and support their band. Second, now it's budget season, I would like to remind the city manager and the board about the water fountain email I sent a few months back. I showed you the Howard Park water fountains, and we need to have at least 10 to 20 water fountains like that around town. We want to promote walking and fitness, and water fountains in key points of the city is a must. Please add the water fountains into the budget. Third, I've spoken to Paul Smith about acquiring a liquor license for our golf course, and I want to thank his whole staff for all the hard work they do. I understand we are about $100,000 in the red on our golf course every year, and I promise a liquor license and golf cart girls or boys would drive up revenue. I would like, I would also like the board, CRA, Parks and Recs, to start considering a community pool for the residents. Indoor/outdoor community pool is up to this board to decide, but a community pool will keep the kids active. I know we, I know we can find the money to produce a project. We spent over $1 million from the CRA money to do the Court Street. Imagine if we used a million dollars for a community pool for the residents. And finally, the drain to nowhere, and how this relates to Tom Funchen. I emailed the board June 3rd about the flooding all across Sunset Drive at the intersections of Riverside, Wideview, Florida Avenue, as well as the northernmost intersection of Peninsula Avenue and Riverside. These streets were completely underwater. The employee shins were underwater, you saw the pictures that I had sent. I want to say the Public Works employees are great, and we appreciate all city employees and your hard work and dedication to the city. Then, Tarpon Springs investigative reporters received information from Public Works employees that the drain at the intersection of Riverside and Sunset leads to nowhere. That's right, the drain leads to nowhere. Even when they did Bay Shore Heights, it wasn't tied together, and for some reason, I don't know why that happened. And, and the truth is, Tom Funchen's known about this whole time, for four years, he's known about this issue. Once it's exposed, then the city manager will pass the buck to Tom, and Tom Funchen will pass it along as well as Tarpon Springs. And I think it's important, Tom Funchen lives within the city since the Public Works Department had started back in 2009, but this position wasn't updated in Section 20 of the Charter, and the Charter needs to be revisited. We must stick true to our Charter, every part of it, and when changes need to be made, they need to be made. A department head is department head, especially one that deals with stormwater and drainage issues. Summertime's coming up, we're in really bad shape when it comes to all that. We need to be cutting-edge and innovative. Now, the question is, how can Tom Funchen know what's going on in our city, especially on the weekends? He won't, because he doesn't live here. Now, how can a department head in charge of one of the biggest problems in flooding live 30 minutes away? If he cared about Tarpon Springs, he would move back within the city. Now, since I got a little time, a lot of the residents have been asking me, why did I choose Commissioner, seat four? Well, originally, that wasn't my plans. When I went to go to the clerk's office, I was looking at the file, and the very first thing the city clerk did to me was present the paperwork in front of me, the seats, the names of the individuals, and the asterisks next to the people's names. Mayor, you had an asterisk saying that you were being termed out. Commissioner Vaticiottis had an asterisk saying that he was giving up his spot to run for mayor, so the spot would be open for one year. I want to thank Commissioner Donovan for actually telling the city clerk that you will officially not be running, because there was an asterisk next to your name. And then, who didn't have an asterisk next to their name? It was Townsend Terrapini himself. So, I wonder what's going on here with this, his good friend and realtor, you know, what are they trying to monopolize the seat? He hasn't officially announced to the city clerk that he won't be running again. To me, it seems like a charade, and a straw man being used to create some type of competition that isn't there. So, I think we need to get it on the record, and as a matter of fact, when I was starting to put these meetings up about confronting this issue and this monopoly of the seat, Georgia finally reached out to me, and he said, "Please stop saying that stuff, it's not true," and all that stuff. And I said, "George, how did you not know that you were applying for the same seat as your real estate agent?" And he looked me in the eye and said, "I had no idea." And that just can't be true, because that was the very first thing that the city clerk presented to me. So, I don't know why you guys are trying to deceive us. It's time to come forward. I don't care if it's a three-way race, four-way race. Two, I want the better of the city. I have a plan to help push this comprehensive plan for the current and future state of Tarpon Springs, and I will do my best to make sure that I am a voice for the people of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Jim Kolianos, 1406 Circle Drive, Tarpon Springs. I was seriously hoping I wouldn't have to get up here tonight. I thought that, ooh, made a mess. I thought that maybe Mr. Kulyas deciding that he was running for the, one of the highest seats in the city, would quit accusing everybody of everything they do as being wrong. The only thing that got to me tonight, quite honestly, because I've gotten used to him, he notified, he noticed that my son was sitting up here, ooh, and that I sat behind him. Why would that bother anybody? Because I came in late, took the first seat that I came to? Something wrong, guys. Listen, I've been a charter member for the last four times, it's every five years. He has never been to a charter meeting. He talks about changing the charter. I don't know what Funchen did to him. Apparently, he didn't fix his street or fix his drain, but Tom does a hell of a job, alright? He's not a director. He doesn't have to move into town. I mentioned this two weeks ago, but our candidate seems to be a little slow recognizing what's going on. Quite honestly, I'm sick and tired of hearing it. I get calls daily about this. The people in this town want this stopped? This nuisance talk stopped has nothing to do with this board. And I want one of you, tell me what that has to do with this board. Costa, you were on the charter committee. Did you see him anywhere? Don't have to answer. I see it on your face. No, he wasn't there. He didn't question, he didn't ask, he didn't offer, he didn't do anything. And he went in, and the city clerk, he calls her Thea Irene, gave him a piece of paper to let him know which was, which seats were available. And he's made something horrible about that. There's some conspiracy. Why didn't he know? Why didn't he tell? Tonight, you're gonna talk about your new rules and regulations? I'm gonna stay here if it takes to midnight, because you gotta stop this from happening. You're doing nothing. Everybody in this county talks about us, because we allow everybody to come up here and trash everybody else. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Anita Protas, 901B Shore Drive.
Mrs. Protas, it's nice to see you again.
Happy to be back. I get a little winded, but I can't take this anymore. I went down to the county, I went to the engineering department, I went to the planning department. We are the laughingstock of Pine Ellis County. They say, "What's going on up there? People hate each other? All we hear is ugly things between each other in Tarpon." This is my home, and I don't like to hear that. I'm tired of watching on TV all the ugliness. We have a future in Tarpon. You need growth. You need roads. We're doing nothing wrong. We need them here. It's a bloodline to this community. It's taxes, it's people going to our restaurants, people going to our stores, going to our grocery stores, penny for Pine Ellis. Don't scrutinize everything. It's a good project, we need it. The projects going on in Tarpon, that's making Tarpon rich, making it grow. All of us who are complaining, we're not gonna be here 10 or 15 years from now. We've got to keep Tarpon growing. We've got to stop this ugliness. And I want Mr. Kulyas to hear this from me, and he'll probably attack me next time. Lane LaChorus did not train me to be a commissioner. He did not train me to be a mayor. I beat him, sorry about your father, but I beat him, and you can never say that I took money, I did things for people, took a lot of hell on the hospital, but I survived it. But these men are doing what they're supposed to do. And to accuse people, our attorney, Mr. Funchen, doing their job, stay in their shoes one day and see what they're doing. Keep doing what you're doing, go straight ahead, go forward, you're doing the right thing.
Thank you. No clap in place, no. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Do we have any other public comments? I hear none. Thank you. We are now going to the presentations, number one. Is there- Number one is the hurricane season 2021. It was requested by me, Mayor Chris Alahuzis.
Good evening. Scott Young, Fire Chief. Here to give our annual hurricane presentation. That's again, that's that time of the year. First, I want to start showing you what happened last year. Last year was a record-breaking year for storms. We had the most storms ever recorded. And this is just a little snapshot up here of what you encountered last year. And as you can see, we kind of just dodged all the storms, kind of went around us and to the left of us, to the right of us. So, we lucked out, especially with it being a record number of storms. What can we expect? We get, expect between 13 and 20 storms this year. The average is about 14. Hurricanes are, NOAA is expecting six to 10 storms. The average is about seven. And major hurricanes this year, three to five, with an average of about three. This is about 60% above the normal activity. I think that's kind of odd to say because I think the normal activity is going to have to change because it seems like it's getting busier every year. So, here's the name of the storms this year, if you haven't seen them already. Uh, the first one's already been crossed off. That was crossed, uh, that came about, uh, Anna, the end of May. It's like the fifth year in a row that we've had a storm already started in May. Uh, but I don't see anybody's name that I know here on the board, so that's a good thing. So, what we can expect, this is, uh, it's hard to tell by the backup information, but on the screen, you can see the red outline of the areas that the NOAA is predicting as hotspots. And as you can see, Tarpon Springs is in that area of hotspots this year. Uh, I imagine that we are pretty much in that area all the time. Uh, so hopefully, that won't be something that we have to be concerned about this year. So, let's make sure you get your house prepared. Some of the main things to get ready. Cover your windows. Make sure your shutters or plywood is up to par and it's ready to go. Uh, if you have to get some new plywood, uh, it's time to do that. Uh, it's time to make sure your trees are trimmed, that you don't have any loose branches, dead branches hanging, that you need to, uh, get them trimmed away. But you don't want them flying around, breaking windows, or getting anybody hurt. Uh, make sure your garage door is up to par. Uh, that's usually the weakest point of any home is the garage door unless you have one of the new hurricane-type doors. And also generators. If you haven't got a generator or you need a generator, now's the time to check yours or go out and purchase one. Uh, one of the main calls we usually get in the fire department for generators is that they're too close to the house or people start the generator inside the garage. Cover them in oxide and the exhaust will, uh, not be a good thing for you. So, please, uh, keep them away from your home if you buy one. Let's talk a little bit about, uh, being prepared. It's a good time to sit down with your family, review your emergency plans, make sure you know what you're going to do, where you're going to go if you have to go somewhere. Uh, set up an out-of-town contact. It's very important. If you're, if you plan on leaving and going, uh, out of the area because of evacuation, call a friend or a family member that's out of town, that, uh, you can let them know where you plan on going, when you're leaving, when you plan on getting there. And then, give them a call when you get there so they know you made it okay. And who to call if you don't hear from you by a certain time. And then, when you return, do the same thing. Let them know you're headed back to the area so they know that you're okay. And then, when you get back to town, let them know that. One of the most important things is to follow the instructions by the, uh, local authorities regarding evacuation orders. Uh, make sure when they say it's time to go, you need to go. Uh, especially if you're in an evacuation zone. On the supplies, some of the things you need to make sure you have with you, either whether you're staying at home or if you're leaving. Uh, make sure you have medications and copies of your prescriptions available. Uh, some non-perishable foods, water, usually a minimum of a gallon of water per person per day. Uh, one thing you might want to think about, if you take any medications that require a little bit more water, you want to pack some more water. Uh, sometimes the water systems are shut down for safety of the infrastructure, so that's something you need to be aware of. Uh, infant children, make sure you have diapers, uh, formulas, stuff like that because it may be hard to find afterwards. So, start, uh, stockpiling that kind of stuff that you might need. And make sure you have some cash. Uh, power goes out, ATMs will not work. So, you want to make sure you have cash. Uh, credit card machines may not work in the stores if they get opened up some, to some extent. So, make sure you have some cash with you. Uh, change of clothes, very important because you might be on the road or in a shelter or somewhere for a few days. You want to make sure you're prepared for that. When it comes to your documents, make sure you have all your documents in a waterproof case. Uh, it's going to be raining, there could be some flooding going on. Uh, make sure you have your deeds, your titles, your wills with you. Insurance policy is always good to have with you. Uh, medical records, any prescriptions that you might have, uh, put in the box with you. IDs, uh, birth certificates, passports, these are all important items that you don't want to lose in a storm. So, if you do go out of town, make sure you bring those things with you in a waterproof box. So, how do we know where we have to leave or not? There's multiple ways to know what evacuation, uh, zone you live in. Uh, if you are in the unincorporated parts of Tarpon, you can look at your, uh, utility bill, it'll be on that, uh, statement. Uh, you can go to the property appraiser's site, put in your information, your address and stuff, it'll come up and tell you what, uh, evacuation zone you're in. Uh, your trim notice that you get each year, if you can look at that, that'll show you what evacuation zone you're in. Uh, there is an automated phone system line up there that you can call. They'll let you know what zone you're in if you have, uh, don't have the internet or anything. And then, if you have a smartphone, the Pinellas Ready App, Ready Pinellas App. It's a free app you can download on your phone. Uh, anywhere you're at in the city at that time, it'll tell you what evacuation zone you're standing in. So, if you have it and you're at home, it'll tell you, uh, that you're in evacuation A, B, C, or so on. It's a great app, it gives you a lot of the information that you might need about, uh, evacuating, where you can go, what you might need, it'll have, uh, stuff for packing and stuff like that. On the same line, knowing your zone, A, B, C, D, you can tell up there on the chart, if you're in an A evacuation, surge waters can be expected up to 11 feet. Unfortunately, Tarpon Springs is an A, B zone pretty much throughout the city. There's some scattered Cs and a couple little areas of D, but predominantly, A and B are throughout, uh, Tarpon Springs. Uh, mobile homes, if you have to evacuate, anytime there's an evacuation order, you have to leave. If it's a mandatory evacuation, it's always recommended to go if you're in a mobile home. So, we get to our shelters. As we told you last year, we lost our, uh, shelter at the middle school, Tarpon Springs Middle School. This is because it's an evacuation B zone. The county decided it wasn't a good place for us. So, now, our closest, uh, shelters that we can send our residents to is Carwise Middle School, Palm Harbor Middle School, and Palm Harbor University. Uh, the reason they did this, the main reason, is they didn't want to have people out in the, uh, middle school in a B-zone evacuation. And then, the storm builds up and gets bigger and they have to move to a C or a D-level evacuation. The nightmare of getting all those people out of that school at that time would be, uh, pretty catastrophic and hard to do at the last minute. Uh, hopefully, within the future, we'll find some way to get the, uh, shelter back in Tarpon, but, uh, county's always looking for ways to, uh, do something. But as of yet, I haven't heard nothing. We also have a special needs program. Uh, if you have family members that need assistance or can't evacuate on their own, they can register with the fire department or the county, uh, for, uh, to get assistance, uh, and move to an evacuation center. What that happens is you get called, we tell you when we're going to be there. We have buses, we come around, we pick you up, you'll be, uh, taken to a shelter and returned home when it's safe to be, returned home. Right now, the city has a little over 200 people signed up in this program. Uh, and if you need an application, you can get ahold of us and we'll be happy to get that to you. Again, I like to show this, each year, this slide here, this is Hurricane Michael. This happened a couple of years ago. This is what's happening with these storms. They're finding that they're building a lot faster than normal. Uh, Michael was a tropical storm, uh, down, just by the Cancun down there. And within three days, it was a category five and hit, uh, Mexico City up in, uh, the Panhandle and was a devastating storm, mostly because of flooding and surge waters. So, how can you keep in contact? If you have a Twitter account, Facebook account, the city's website is also an X, uh, a good point of information. If you can like us on Facebook, the fire department, Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue, we'll always have updated information as the storm is going on. One of the best things is Alert Pinellas. It's a free, uh, service. You can, uh, go to the county's, uh, emergency management site. You'll find a little icon there with Alert Pinellas. You can sign up using your home phone number or your cellphone and you'll get phone calls or text messages, however you prefer. And it'll always give you updated information of what's happening with the storms and/or any other information of emergency, uh, issues that you need to know about going on. So, those are great little, uh, info- social media apps that you can use. With that, I'll answer any questions I can and hopefully, we have a very quiet season. I also, I handed out the Hurricane Preparedness Guide, gave each one of you one of these. We've also put these out throughout the city. They're out in the lobby of City Hall, uh, the library, and, uh, at the fire department and, uh, much of the mobile home parks have received their copies already too. So, there's great information in here. A lot of the stuff I just went over is in these pamphlets. That's it.
Chief Young, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for explaining the key preparation steps for hurricanes. Uh, we're going to go to, uh, public comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. Thank you for your presentation. I am an ex-first responder. I did Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Sandy, um, in New York. And I would recommend, in addition, since we do need water, um, to freeze gallon bags of, uh, just, you know, water so that you could utilize it to keep your refrigeration, uh, for longer periods of time. And when it defrosts, you could use the water as a drinking mechanism as well. So, it's a dual purpose. And other than that, I, everything else you were saying, just to keep the first aid kit, you know, readily available, possibly battery-operated radios, um, battery-operated, uh, power tools in case you, you know, you have flooding that moves items. I've had situations where refrigerators have floated and hit into pipes and pipes had broken and, uh, it, it just makes a big, huge mess. Surge water is probably one of those scariest things I've ever witnessed in my life. So, it comes in fast and it moves everything. And truthfully, the water finds every fault that you don't notice. You know, people store gasoline. Gasoline tanks float and then they spill over. So, even when you're innocently, uh, having spare gasoline, if you don't put it high enough, the water finds any mistake that you make. So, think everything through before you do it because it could cause secondary damage. So, that's it. And if, if and when, I'm happy to advise on anything that, you know, I'd happy to go over the, uh, the schedule because I got to see it firsthand. So, thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? Here none. Are there any commission comments? Any commission comments?
Um, Chief, thanks for your presentation. Um, it's way better than Butcher's used to be, so we'll give you kudos for that.
I'll make sure to tell them that.
Yeah, please do. Um, just real quick, I know last year when, uh, the commission became aware that we weren't going to have a hurricane shelter, um, it was kind of a, you know, we, we had some blowback from that. Um, and it's definitely disappointing to me. Um, is it, is it possible to have a shelter in Tarpon Springs? And if it is, what do we need to do to, to take those necessary steps to get a site registered or whatever we need to do?
Is it possible? Probably, the problem is be finding a piece of property that they could build something on that's high enough. Or taking a existing structure and hardening it to a level that they'd be happy with.
When you say "they," who's that?
The county. The county sets the shelters. We don't do that. We, they, we go through emergency management through the county. They're the ones that dictate what shelters can be done. When they took Tarpon Middle from us, we had multiple meetings with them voicing our displeasure. I understood why they did it. I didn't understand why they did it at the last second like they did it last year. Uh, I've sent emails to them this year and so far, I haven't got any answers to what, if there's any movement on any new shelters for us. I haven't received any, as of today. Uh, again tomorrow, I have an emergency management meeting coming up, I think next week, and I'll bring that topic up again to ask them, have they moved anywhere? Are they looking at anything or not? We are looking at, uh, trying to find someplace for a post, uh, uh, storm shelter to be able to put people that need to come back into the area. Because one of the problems is when they use the schools. So, when the schools are the shelters and the storm has passed, the school sys- board wants to get the schools back open as soon as possible. So, they want to get people home. Well, after Irma, what they found is that people couldn't just go back home as fast as the school system wanted them to go back because homes weren't ready. Like in Tarpon, there was areas of Tarpon that didn't have power for a week or so. So, we couldn't, didn't have any places for people to go, but they wanted them out of the schools. So, we're looking for places now that we can put people in a, uh, after the hurricane event. Uh, so, I'm, I'm talking to some people about that and using their places such as the churches and stuff like that, that we can house people so we can get the school systems back open and back online.
Once you have a, an idea of criteria, would it be possible to potentially form a partnership with a private entity? Like, for example, the PD and the fire department have a great working relationship with Reload Gun Range?
Reload Gun Range would be a great place. I think it's a very sound building. I've nev- I've only toured it one time, background was being built. But that, I've, I've thought about that because it is a big building with lots of space. So, that may be an option.
With the commission's consent, I would recommend that as a, as a location for us to look into and potentially, you know, I mean, obviously, they have to reload.
Sure.
The entity would need to agree, but they've worked so well with the community to date, especially with our first responders. And given the structure of the building, it seems like it would be a logical spot. So, maybe you could think about that and get a list of criteria so we could see what, what other opportunities exist. Other than that, thank you.
Hey, Chief. And city managers, might go back to you too. I think one of the, um, the lists to get the occupation license or, uh, to move in to the CO, um, for the Mirrors Crossing was the, um, a study for the Methodist Church. Was there any communication there or did they just decide that they weren't interested at that point?
I think they, they looked at it. It was more or less to do about the windows and glass, I think. I wasn't really part of that. That would have been Chief Butcher back in the day, so I haven't heard much about it.
Well, this was done this past-
I do, I'm trying to set up a meeting with the Methodist Church now about using their building because they have that big hall. We're an after-the-storm place.
Okay. Because I think, um, part of the, the CO, or you have to talk to maybe, um, Kevin about that, is that the Mirrors, uh, or Icaria was actually supposed to do a new study to, um, storm-proof it or to see if it's actually proven that it could withstand a storm. So, maybe we need to follow up on that to see if that happened or not.
And I think, I think, I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but I think the church wasn't quite interested in that.
Okay.
But I'll check when I-
Yes, you're correct. They tried and the church at the last minute, um, decided not to continue with Icaria. They tried, they tried to, but the church decided, but that's why we need to revisit with them again.
Okay. Was there anything with St. P College at all? Did they decide that wasn't something they're interested in also?
I don't think they were interested.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Tiqueras?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief, I, I know you were a little surprised with the shelters last year. Is there anything else that's this year that's new that may be brewing or anything?
Not that I've heard. Uh, we haven't had many meetings with the emergency management at the county. Uh, usually, I would hope by now, they would have told us before the season. Uh, but like I said, we have a meeting, I believe, next week coming up. And, uh, if there's anything there that's surprising, I will definitely forward that on to everybody to make sure, but I haven't heard of anything yet.
But the one thing I'm concerned, and you mentioned it, and it seems to be the kind of conversation around many builder circles and people's plywood. Is there any thoughts on that? Perhaps the, um, I, I, I'll be honest with you, other than I, I'm being told that it's extremely expensive if you can get it and, um, extremely expensive, $85 a sheet for a half-inch plywood. Is there any consideration or maybe some thought of perhaps the city, uh, purchasing a, a large amount of plywood and just having it handy? Like we do sandbags or-
Right, sandbags will work to some extent. But for plywood, I haven't, we haven't looked at buying, you know, a larger quantity of plywood.
Yeah.
No. And it is expensive right now. That is, you know, coming into the season, if you have to buy plywood, it's, it's terrible timing. But, uh, no, we haven't looked into that.
Yeah, is there any, um, short of that, is there any, any other options? I mean, I, I just think this particular year, given the state of building materials, we're going to have to be a little creative.
There are, uh, like the Home Depots, Lowe's, probably Ace, there are aluminum panels.
Aluminum.
Uh, and there are some fiberglass-type panels that you can put up, screw up to the outside of your house, put, uh, anchors in your, you know, walls and stuff, that[1754.02] You could use those, probably. I don't know what the cost of those. I don't know if that's gone up too or not.
Is there any guidance on that anywhere, do you think, that?
You could probably just look on the internet and find out ways to secure your home windows. Probably be in there.
Shorter plywood.
Shorter plywood, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Chief Young, I don't know, do you have any new information about pet shelters?
Pet shelters, most of the shelters are pet shelters now. You don't have to register your pets anymore. Your pets will have to be crated in a crate, and they'll be out of the room. You won't, most of the place shelters, you don't get to keep a pet with you. You have, they'll have a separate room for all the pets and stuff, just because of the barking and whatsoever with the animals. But they usually have them in a separate area. You do need to bring your own food and stuff for the pets.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
The next item on the agenda is another presentation of public art and your plan. To Licorice. Who's going to, oh, there. Ms. Jennings, you're going to do the presentation for us. Thank you.
Yes, I'm trying to get the-
The IT?
Yeah, it's not a touchscreen.
That's not.
Can't close the- Sorry.
Here's Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Help us on the way.
Play.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff and Residents. My name is Joan Jennings. I'm the Chair of the Public Art Committee, or PAC. Our merry band consists of Vice Chair Lucy Ann Robinson, Trish Gregory, Bill Meals, who's here tonight, David Sallow, and Robert Stackhouse, who's also here tonight. We have a vacancy which we hope the Board of Commissioners will fill shortly. We also wish to thank our city liaisons, Diane Wood, Marissa Schumacher, and Tarpon Springs Police Chief Jeff Young. The budget for fiscal year 2021 was $237,751. We spent $1,700 paying the balance on the historic mural. We paid $478 for the plaque for the Storytime sculpture. We spent $438 for a prototype illuminated art box. We spent $3,831 for public art preservation, $800 for a bike rack repair, and $1,300 for the mural at Sisler Field. We're projecting expenses for fiscal year 2022. Again, we have a rolling balance of approximately $4,000 a year for public art maintenance. We allocated $1,400 for a David Danforth mural on the golf course, but I'll speak to that in a bit. We've allocated $135,000 for a Black Heritage project. Expansion of the illuminated art boxes, $16,700. And the inserts for the boxes, $3,656. From our fund balance, deducting the cost of our proposals, it would leave us a balance at the end of fiscal year 2022 of $78,564. Despite COVID, we've been pretty busy this past year. We installed the Glenn and Goodacre Storytime Sculpture and Plaque at the Cultural Heritage Center. We installed solar powered illuminated art box on the Sponge Docks. Fifteen out of the 20 we purchased. We, the placement of the remaining five solar boxes and additional boxes and locations are under discussion. The Indianus mural at the Cultural Center is completed. The Christopher Steele mural in the newly renovated lobby of Advent Health is kind of completed. He's keeping it a secret. Sisler Field mural, one completed. We have a call to artists for another. The Black Heritage Project is in progress. And the David Danforth mural at the golf course, as I said, I'll speak to that in a minute. Recognition. The Tarpon Springs Public Art Projects were prominently featured in the January 2021 newsletter of the prestigious Florida Association of Public Art Professionals. Outdoor sculpture. This is the Glenn and Goodacre Storytime Sculpture with the plaque. I believe you all have seen it. The murals. Okay, one of the jewels in our crown is the historic and cultural mural entitled "This Plot, This Earth." It was painted on a prepared wall in the Cultural Heritage Center, a building that underwent major renovations. It was done by our local artist and art professor, Elizabeth Indianos. And it's truly a masterwork. We recently prepared a key to the mural that lists all of the historic figures, the flora and the fauna on the mural. And we had it printed on aluminum for durability, really. It's come out quite nicely. It's installed adjacent to the mural in the Cultural Center. And we are anticipating a gala unveiling this fall when the Cultural Heritage Center is formally reopened to the public and programmed by Tarpon Arts with theatrical and artistic programs. Our favorite son, Christopher Steele, is working on the mural in the newly renovated lobby of Advent Health. Despite the challenges presenting during this past pandemic year, work on the hospital and Chris's mural is progressing. There will be an accompanying film, which Chris has been working on, and he shared some of the details for our presentation tonight, but is keeping the final project under wraps until his big reveal. Another wonderful Tarpon Springs art project to look forward to. City Manager Licorice was able to find a wonderful workaround for the high cost of liability insurance faced by local artists. By staying within the parameters of a $1,000 fee plus reasonable cost for materials, we were able to commission young artist Monica Swartley to paint this whimsical baseball mural on the side of a rather drab building at historic Sisler Field. There's been a lot of positive community feedback on the mural, and the PAC is proceeding by issuing a call to artists for murals on the other buildings at Sisler, including one for public demand featuring softballs. PAC members Bill Meals and David Sallow have also been scouting other city-owned athletic fields for additional mural locations. So stay tuned. The art boxes. The second call to artists for images for the art boxes ended on June 2, and we received 57 images for consideration by the PAC at its June meeting, which is tomorrow. Because of the overwhelming response, each artist is now limited to two pieces. PAC member Bill Meals is investigating other locations for the art boxes, some of which may be hardwired because of tree canopies that would not be favorable to the solar-powered batteries. And we are looking at something that's perhaps smaller, 20 by 20. The David Danforth mural was being considered. The artist was asked for a proposal to the PAC. But Diane informs me that as of today, we have never received anything from him. So it's going to be under discussion tomorrow at our meeting. The Black Heritage Project. I believe that this significant project will be a truly exciting one and will represent a facet of history missing in public art representation in Tarpon. We've assembled a strong panel representing local history and culture, the experiences of multi-generational Black residents, the president of the Tarpon Springs Area Historical Society, and a multi-generational resident as well, the provost of our local college, the director of the LIPA Ratner, and an expert on local art and history formerly associated with the LIPA. We hope that this project will also resonate with corporations, agencies, and individuals who will contribute grant money to realize what a truly significant art project it is. We hope that our work for the residents of Tarpon Springs represents the highest and best projects that truly reflect our unique history and culture. We are also strongly committed to nurturing our local student and young artists by commissioning them for mural projects on public property like Sunset Beach and our athletic fields. It reflects the talents of our youth and will be a display of public pride. We hope that the Board will vote to approve our prior efforts and our plans for fiscal year 2022 to further our efforts to bring quality and unique art to Tarpon Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. We're going to go to public comments, and then we'll come back to the BOC comments. Are there any public comments on this item?
Peter Lacus, 514 Ashland Avenue. I'd like to thank Ms. Jennings and all the members of the Public Art Committee for their tireless work to bring art to our world. People travel to Rome, Paris, London, New York, all over the world to see art. And this is our opportunity to have Tarpon Springs shine by spreading art all over the community. And I have to thank our previous commissioner, when I was on the Board, Mrs. Sanger, for her idea of creating a public arts committee that is now bringing forth these issues. And I hope this Board will allow this committee to have the independence and the funds needed for them to accomplish their objectives. But I do want to add one more point here. By not having Zoom or people calling in, I know of at least two people who wanted to comment on this issue but are unable to, to give their feedback. So you need to bring Zoom and phone call-ins back so the whole public has the opportunity to comment on all of these issues that come before you. Thank you, Joan, and your committee.
You're welcome.
We wish you all the best.
Thank you, Peter.
And that we can find more places to put public art. Thank you.
Comments on this item?
Thank you, Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I also want to thank Joan Jennings and Bill Meals and everybody else on the committee that works tirelessly. Art is a very interesting and subjective type of thing, and needs to be handled without haste. Once it's on, it's on. And I'm glad that I have somebody who is handling this in a, in a constructive manner. It's not easy to please everybody. But you do an amazing job, and I commend you for it. So I thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for at least giving her the, the wherewithal to do this presentation. Because, like I said, it is, it's a very difficult thing. You go through a museum, everybody has a different like and dislike. So I'm glad that you take the time and do it right. It's very easy to do it wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other public comments on this item?
I'd like to say something, since it's in my field of art, being associated with art over 50 years. When an artist spends money on creating an art project-
State your name and address for the record, please.
John Stavros. I own the Kingston Pop Museum, which is up in Kingston, New York. I was involved with Andy Warhol. I built Andy Warhol's factory. I hung out with Salvador Dali, and I know art. Another nephew of mine, friend of mine, Stavros, down at the Salvador Dali Museum. The best art in this town is behind those buildings where the bike shop is. That, to me, is street art, which is what is happening in the world right now. And I deal with artists like Palladino on Tampa Avenue, where he painted that huge mural. I've seen the mural over there with the sponges. If someone paid $17,000 for that art, to me-
You haven't seen the mural that I was discussing?
Well, the mural that I see over here by the church is a mural.
Oh, that's, this, this is inside the Cultural Heritage Center?
Right. But if someone is paying $17,000, and I just heard that $750,000 are spent on art to promote Tarpon Springs. Tarpon Springs, first of all, is a brand that is known for the sponges and the epiphany. Where is the art related to-
Jennings, this is not a discussion. Please state your, your comments.
Right. So I think that the Board here should be a little bit more careful where money is spent towards statues and this and that, because it's not promoting the welfare and the brand Tarpon Springs. And I've been here 40 years, and I've seen this room before it was built, and I was going to bring major theater productions here. So art is a brand that needs to be sold, not to be put on walls. Because before you know it, all of Tarpon will become what other cities have become. Because once you have the street artists invading your, your buildings, you're going to have big competition. And that competition is free, and they're tagging buildings. And before you know it, downtown Tarpon Springs will look like a graffiti. And that's what you have to be careful. So when you're bringing in artists into a town, remember, Tarpon is not known for art. Tarpon is known for what it is, which is a beautiful city. I'd rather see art that relates to the city in certain spots, and people can say, that's a beautiful piece of art, not like a mural here, a mural there. You have an area right behind the bike shop, right there where the train station is, that should be the designated art wall of Tarpon Springs. All of those little buildings there, and that is the area that art should be promoted. If you all of a sudden go here, and go here, and you spend money here, and spend money here, it's not going to define an art community. Why don't you have, like, a museum here for art, which is what I've been fighting for years?
Well, we have the LIPA Ratner, and that's-
Ms. Jennings, this is not a discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Let the man speak.
Anyway, on that note, I will talk to the planning commission, because I'm more concerned about what's happening in my neighborhood. And I would love to help you out with many artists that I know worldwide that can come here, do an exhibition, do a mural for free, which all of a sudden, people will go, that's an amazing piece of art. And then you can do T-shirts and sell the T-shirts, and the city can make money on art. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, any other public comments on this item? Here none. Now we're going to commission comments. Ms. Jennings, I want to thank you for presenting to us your, and your plan. Also, I want to thank all the members of the Public Art Committee. And I see some members here. If you please stand to be acknowledged, and we want to express our appreciation to you. Public art reflects the culture and the heritage of our community, and we are very glad and grateful that you're doing that for us. The art boxes that we have down at the Sponge Docks, we have so many compliments. We get so many compliments about that. When it gets dark at night, people see that. They, it's very, very neat. And I just want to say thank you, on behalf of the people that are giving me the compliments to you.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. As a matter of fact, if you remember, I was there when you saw the first one.
You took the first picture of the illuminated box.
Yeah, thank you. I'm anxious to see the Black Heritage Project that you, that we're going to do in several places. I assume one will be down at the docks, another one down at the, by Marlothka King area, maybe?
Yes, in the Union Academy neighborhood.
Union Academy neighborhood. Yeah, I'm looking forward to see that. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Indianos for completing the mural in the Cultural Center. It's beautiful. And I'm looking forward to, to see the mural that Mr. Christopher Steele is, is working on. And as you said, he's almost finished with that. The hold up right now is the hospital is now ready for that mural to be placed. So, again, thank you all.
Yes, well, we have to thank all of our local artists, like Elizabeth and Chris, you know, for all the amazing artwork they've done for the community.
Yeah, thank you. Mike Schmier, car? Any comments?
I've got a couple. Ms. Jennings, thanks for the, the presentation. It was a nice presentation. The gift of having you here two weeks in a row now. First, I need to apologize to the city manager. I was a little hasty. In our last meeting, I didn't realize that you guys had the insurance thing worked out. So I came across a little strong, so I just want to apologize publicly about that. I find I admit when I'm wrong. Secondly, I have a couple of questions about the art boxes. You have a new call to artists. What, what's the current artwork? Is that going to be reused again, or do they fade, or how does that work?
Well, the thing is that the art boxes consist of two pieces of extremely heavy vinyl. The artwork is actually a decal that's adhered to the, to the vinyl. So now that we have our second round of call to artists, we're going to be, the PAC is going to be- round of call to artists, we're going to be... The PAC is going to be selecting the work for the second round. The decals can be peeled off the vinyl and new decals inserted. So the cost of, you know, turning, you know, replacing the art in the art boxes is very reasonable.
Okay. So the current panels will go, like, they'll be cleaned, cleared off, like an etch-a-sket, I guess. You shake it and it's gone now, right?
Exactly, right.
Okay. So do you... Does the city still own the images or anything along those lines that could be reused again if they wanted to? Is that how that works?
Well, the artist retains copyright on their images. We paid each one of the artists whose work was used $100, and they retained the original work. They just sent us a high-resolution photograph of the work, which we printed on the decals.
Okay.
In fact, we even have a ceramic piece that's in the art box right next to Mykonos.
Cool. Okay. Yeah, I just... I mean, there's a lot of great pieces that are out there. We need to be able to reuse them again if it's a rotation every other year. I'm not sure what your plans are, but I think it's a great way to really increase the art. And it's going to be good to see those around other parts of town, too, throughout the city. So I love public art. There's some things I don't understand because we all look at art differently. There's some things I love. That's the best thing about art. I know we tend to have some fun conversations about public art overall, but there is some things that we've talked about in the past. And I would like to bring up a couple items that I brought up our last meeting as well was some type of interactive artwork, which is like a similar to like a bench. I used some examples of St. Pete Dad, and I'm not sure if you saw those pictures or not. Did you end up seeing those?
Yeah, but those were the first time I've seen them.
Okay.
You know, they'd probably look a lot like the Storytime.
Yeah, kind of. So the bench is made out of bronze, and then the artist actually lives in St. Pete. He's from the Midwest. But... And there's multiple artists that are out there. I'm not trying to say use one artist over another, but just the concept of it and the idea of it. We're a town with a lot of history, and then we're also a town with a lot of tourism. I know when I go places and visit areas, it's some... One thing I enjoy is finding art to take pictures with. And you see it with the Niyads down in the roundabout at the Sponge Docks. People are taking pictures out there a lot. But a couple things that I want to bring up, and I mean, we could talk further as a board to... I don't necessarily want to have to go this direction to give you all direction, but I'd like at least champion you with it, to take it and run with it, is this is the ones down in St. Pete. I think they're off Beach Boulevard, right in downtown area. And really, how do we interact some of the history? I talked about like an old sponger who's clipping the sponges. It's not something you see all that often with the large shears. You see him kind of like with a bunch of sponges all around them. He's shaping the sponges. It would just be a really neat part to capture the history of the old way it's done with the big shears. And then also, we have such a treasure of having our own train station. And again, not to mimic anything that's been done in the past, but to have something where if it's a train conductor or if it's a train ticket person who's taking a ticket and he's sitting out on the bench, out in front of the train station, they really should be in the shade. So the sponger... I have to go back to the sponge real quick. It could be under maybe the oak tree at the visitor's center or under the oak tree in front of the sponge exchange. I know there's some sponge shops there, but it's good that they're in the shade because they get hot if it's in the sun. And somehow, if there could be a conductor, or like I said, a ticket person sitting on the bench, maybe on their break, but they're in full gear of their costume or their uniform, et cetera. And then that's going to interact. People are going to interact with that. I just think that that's really a good opportunity. And relatively, they're not super expensive compared to some other bronze statues that I've seen price-wise.
They're... I would think they're at least a few hundred thousand dollars.
It was about $45,000, which I was surprised about, yeah. And I'll connect with you about the guy's name and I'll give you his website. But nice guy. I talked to him for about 30 minutes or so. But surprisingly, I thought it was much more affordable than I thought it was going to be. So just to give you a little more background on that. But overall, these are just some things that people have talked to me about in the past, too. Looking at some type of Anclot Lighthouse replica, again, going to our history, it's something that we've talked about as a board for the past few years. It's been brought up in our meetings. Looking at, I don't know what it would be made out of, what type of medium. It's, again, these are just some ideas that could work, I think. At Sunset Beach, either at Sunset Beach or maybe at Riverside Field, there's a great opportunity. There's a lot of space at Riverside Field at the corner there, Riverside and Sunset, to do some type of public art on the park area. And also, when you're looking at some of the corrals, I know it's been some discussion as well, too, is if there's an opportunity to do some type of bird scene within like the Needle Rush of the river. Needle Rush is like the long, pointy grass that's in the Anclot River. If it's like a spoonbill or if it's a heron of some sort, maybe in the mangroves, it'd be nice to see that in that area, the corral, like the Splash Park, right next to the river. Again, that's another main fairway to the Sponge Docks. Again, it doesn't have to be something that's $100,000. I think it'd be done for probably less than $5,000. But these are just some of the things that are incorporating, some of the history and some of the nature parts of Tarpon Springs. It would be nice to see moving forward. So like I said before, I appreciate everything that you do. Appreciate everything that the board does. I enjoy watching your meetings. One of the things that's on your agenda tomorrow, I think that's great, is the Girl Scout presentation.
Right.
When I saw that, I almost like jumped out of my chair because the creativity of what I saw, what they did down in, I can't remember if Indian Rocks or somewhere else in the county, how they really pulled the sea life around the storm drains was like such a cool idea and creative idea. So it's great to see some of those ideas coming before the board. And I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys are going to be completing this year and then the next year, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Jennings, thanks for your presentation. Really excited about the direction that the Public Art Committee is heading in the last few years. I'm appreciative in the more active role that y'all are taking and trying to really cover the whole community with beautification as it relates to art. And I think that y'all are doing a fantastic job in really getting outside of the box in terms of the diversity of the pieces that you're offering us. So I'm pleased by that. And also, as far as some of your items in your presentation, the... I think the $4,000 that you have slated, roughly $4,000 for maintenance associated with some of our things is forward-thinking. And I'm pleased to see that we are taking care of some of this money that we're investing in public art. So I'm glad to see that. I did have a couple of questions, but I... Overall, I'm very pleased with the committee. And I do also want to recognize the members and what you do. I saw Bill Meals in the audience and I was thinking to myself, "What is this guy doing here tonight?" And I forgot he was on the Public Art Committee. So thanks for coming tonight, Bill. So as far as the marlin, I know that you said that there was lack of a response from the artist.
Shark, right.
Oh, is it a shark? It looks like a marlin to me. I'm kind of a fishing guy, too, so... So where was that going on the golf course?
Bill, do you remember? I think you were the one that was in charge of that.
The dumpster corral.
Yeah, it was on the dumpster corral.
Dumpster corral. So that's over by where the actual golf carts go?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. So that's roughly like eight by 10 or something in size? Gotcha. Okay, so that was a question. And then you said that your ending balance is going to be around $78,000.
Right.
That was for '22 fiscal year, end of fiscal year '22. Do you have any idea in terms of like more funding, additional funding, what's in the pipeline as it relates to some of our projects around town?
Well, as you know, all of the public art funds are not taxpayer dollars. They're all contributions for developers who are engaged in projects, a million dollars a Rover, which these days would be a house for your teacup Yorkie. Yeah, they... So those are the funds that make up the Public Art Fund. I was in New York recently and I got a call from a friend of mine who was just sent to Washington to the Department of Agriculture. And I have a very good idea that we could get some, a government grant for the Black Heritage Project.
Great.
Because interestingly enough, it deals with sponging and sponging's an agricultural endeavor. So it's kind of a little sideways angle on it, but...
That's great. We'll take any of the grant funds we can get.
Exactly. Thank you, yes.
One of the reasons I ask that is because it seems that the Public Art Committee has so much traction now and is doing so many good things within the community that, you know, you have a unique situation where you actually can budget for things, right? And you have funds that come from projects that can kind of be forecasted a little bit. So I think that it would be probably prudent for the Public Art Committee with the help of, you know, the Finance Department or the Economic Development Director to be able to forecast a little bit in terms of projects that are forthcoming and funds that would be forthcoming in order to kind of keep the momentum going that y'all have right now. So maybe during the budget cycle, Mr. City Manager, we can get with some members of staff to try and give the Public Art Committee as well as this board an idea of, you know, how many... How much funds are in the pipeline that are forthcoming in this fiscal year, next fiscal year, et cetera, because things do take time.
Right.
So if you know that you're going to have, you know, an influx of a couple hundred thousand dollars, then you can start to plan on how you're going to spend that and et cetera. So all in all, I'm very pleased with the direction that this committee is going. And the fruits of your labor are very visible. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. I would like to be also proactive about approaching agencies and also, you know, private citizens to see, you know, about getting some grants or contributions towards some of the projects.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Jennings, for the presentation and all the art committee members that were able to make it out tonight. Really appreciate everything you guys do. Before I forget it, I really like Commissioner Terrapini's idea to do some budget forecasting whenever possible, maybe this budget season. I just think that's always prudent. I just had a couple of questions on the projects that were coming up. For the Cultural Center mural, if I'm a citizen and I want to go watch that or see that, I just want to go in and look at it, what are my options to do it? What are the hours? What's the accessibility looking like for that?
Well, the thing is, it's obviously been closed because of COVID, and it's really under the purview of Tarpon Arts. So they're going to start programming the building in the fall. Is that correct, Mark? They're going to, I think...
We'll also be... We're also talking about opening the building during the summer at times, especially for the viewing. So that's in progress, too, before we get kicked in with the fall, to actually have summer hours and stuff to view the mural and see the center.
Yeah, so though, you know, there will be a lot of opportunities to see the mural once the building's open. As I said, a lot of this was contingent on COVID restrictions.
Yeah, certainly. If there's anything the board can do, whether it's sending a letter or something like that urging them, "Hey, we're ready to get something out of this because it looks really cool in here and I wanted to go see it." So I'm excited to get that opened up. As far as the Sizzler Field mural goes, I know that got a great response from the Little League, and I know they were looking to do a softball-type of thing, something similar on the other side. Is that going to be done by the same artist or do you have to put up a whole new call?
We put out another call to artists. That artist did respond, and we weren't particularly as happy with the design she submitted as we were with the soft... with the hardballs. So it's...
Were they not the same thing?
No.
Wow. I would have imagined they worked the first time, maybe do the same thing with softballs. But, okay. Art is subjective.
Right.
And then my only other question is, do we have any idea yet what the Black Heritage Project will look like? Is it going to be... Are you looking at something kind of like the Niyads? Is it going to be like a sculpture or...
Well, it's interesting that you ask that because I kind of forgot to include it in my presentation. The thing is that, as you saw, we have a number of really, you know... Let me go back. Sorry. The selection panel consists of Tina Bukavales, Annie Dabs, Rod Davis, Dudley Sally, Milton Smith, Lynn Whitlaw, and Teresa Wilkins. So what we've tried to do is basically establish some conceptual parameters, but it's going to be, you know, left up to the artists to give us a creative interpretation of what they're going to, you know, how they're going to deal with this. The game plan at the moment, which is kind of standard operating procedure with projects like this, is to narrow the field down to two candidates, which will then be presented to the Board of Commissioners for a final decision. So, you know, it could really take a lot of forms, and I myself am interested in seeing, you know, what's going to be, you know, sent to us in terms of, you know, conceptualizing the whole concept.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing it. Well, thank you very much again for the presentation. That's all I got.
Oh, you're welcome.
I just think we've got a tremendous art effort going on in Tarpon Springs. And, I mean, when you see Chris Steele and Liz Indianos, as well as our other local artists on the same screen, all working together in the same year, that says a lot for collaboration. You've got tremendous talent on the art committee. I'd like, along with the money in the pipeline, I would hope that there's some outreach in terms of the existing art committee members to reach out to some of the other artists to kind of keep that talent going on the art committee. I think that would be very, very important to do so. And I think would be very helpful to the commission as well when they select replacements as well. So I think it's a tremendous effort, and I want to thank every member that's on it. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, thank you for your hard work.
We are truly dedicated to bringing unique quality artwork to Tarpon Springs. So thank you.
The next presentation is on the South Spring Boulevard Shoreline update. Mr. Licoris, we're ready for the presentation.
Yes, Mr. Robinson will be presenting it.
Good evening. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. Without any preamble, I'm going to introduce Doug Stoker with Cardino. You've met him before. He's here tonight to talk about the shoreline, or sorry, the South Spring Boulevard Shoreline options.
Well, good evening. Of course, there are three concerns along the South Spring corridor. For the purposes of simplicity, I've color-coded the presentation. So as we go through, we're going to talk about sea level rise and street flooding first. That's the... You'll see a blue bar at the bottom of this screen. Talk about a safe pedestrian route and east-west trail connectivity. That'll be in green. And then, of course, rivetment aesthetics. So this is the typical section of the Army Corps project that put rivetment along Whitcomb Bayou. Unfortunately, there's nothing typical about the way that section was applied. As you can see in this collection of photos, it's highly variable. So that's important as we go through the rest of this presentation. We have a buried wall section that comes and goes. We have some sections where it's very narrow, some sections where it's very wide. We have stormwater facilities and we have utilities. So it is a very, highly variable section. So as we talk about sea level rise and street flooding, of course, you saw these from Dr. Robinson's great presentation. The intersection at MLK and South Spring floods frequently. And this, of course, is not stormwater flooding. This is high tide. This is inundation from a king tide. So that continues to be a problem and will continue to grow as we face sea level rise. So without boring you with a lot of details, I'll just do a quick conversion for you. Most of the tide data that we see is in NGVD datum. And to convert that to the survey data that I'm going to explain in a minute, there is a correction factor. So if you just think about the mean high, high-water elevation in this area is converted, is going to be approximately 2.15 in the NAVD datum. So not to confuse you, but just think of 2.15 is the average high, high tide. So we have two tides in a day typically. The higher of those two tides averages at about 2.15. Now, we can get tides that are higher than that. It can be as much as three, say, on the typical scale. So again, as we move forward with that information, then we have to add on top of that sea level rise. And of course, you've heard from the Sustainability Committee and other folks up here that the sea level could rise as much as two feet in the next 50 years. So just keep that in mind as we go, again, from a base elevation of 2.15 up to three as being that typical average high tide. So the city commissioned some data collection. So we went through and surveyed this area, basically from Craig Park all the way down to MLK. Here is the result of some of those low points. So this is where you saw the flooding a minute ago. The elevations make sense, right? 1.53 as the low, again, compared with the 2.15 or a 3 is a high, high tide. Not a storm event, but just a high, high tide. And that gives you the 18 inches or so of water, a foot of water that you saw those cars traveling through. So as we move north on this corridor, at West Lime Street, for example... So as we move north on this corridor, at West Lime Street, for example, you have another inlet. Inlets are obviously typically going to be the low spot, 2.26. Again, higher than the, the lower elevation at MLK, but still very low, and on a high, high tide, not a storm event, you can see the tide coming through the inlet. Same thing as we move further north. You can see up at the Craig Park boat ramp, 2.46, and then a little further south, 2.59. So again, very low and subject to being inundated. So what does that mean? Well, in the short term, what that means is we can look at options such as adding check valves, adding berms or walls to try to keep that water from just flowing into the intersection and onto the roadway as the, the tide continues to hot, to raise. And then, of course, long-term solution would be to consider reconstructing the road at a higher elevation. So now, as we move on to the second topic in the area, which is the pedestrian route, it's going to be important, as we go through some options, to talk about what, what, what the board wants, what the city wants, what's the best purpose for a pedestrian path out there, whether it's a sidewalk or a trail. We did some geotechnical evaluation along that entire corridor. The borings are highly variable, like we get here in this area and throughout Florida. There is some relatively deep pore material up by the bridge, but in general, we can, if, if a boardwalk option is selected or other deep foundation option, it's not too bad. There's good material at about 10 or 15 feet deep. So just as we go forward with options, that, that'll be in our mind. So one of the options that we've talked about in the past and that we've explored is to build in some kind of a concrete boardwalk, or really just a, a concrete surface with a retaining wall. Now, again, I mentioned that this is a highly variable section, so if this cartoon or this drawing shows a, a wall with a big overhang, understand that it's going to be highly dependent upon the section. Also remember that since this is an Army Corps of Engineers project, the revetment is, that any modifications that, that the city does for a, any sea level rise concerns, flooding concerns, or in this case, a pedestrian path, will have to be evaluated by the Army Corps under a Section 408 determination to see if the original impact, or the original purpose of that revetment is impacted by the project. In this particular case, adding a seawall strengthens that, that revetment, so it would likely receive approval. We're putting a cost of approximately $3.4 million on this option. Think of it as, as just a comparative cost. The prices, as you've discussed with, with Hurricane Plywood, are rising sharply. But another option, because we know that, that already the revetment is not, not a good-looking thing to see alongside the road, and we don't want to block the beautiful view, so that option right there gives a railing. We want to get rid of that railing. We can do that. If, again, if it's a sidewalk, it has one criteria. If it's a trail, it has a different criteria, but in this particular case, we are giving some extra, what we call clear zone, which is just clear recovery distance. So if a bicycle is riding on the path, a dog walks out in front of it, moves over to the side, it has some room to recover before obviously going into the rocks or going into the water. But we do get rid of the railing, but it is a bigger footprint, so now you have more of a chance to impact the mangroves, more of the chance to, to go westward of Mean High Water, which is fill in Whitcomb Bayou and which would have to be considered a permitting. One thing we can do, and there's, you know, several permutations, or dozens of permutations with each one of these alternates, is raise this wall, and that can provide some of the shielding from that high tide that comes in, again, together with check valves in the stormwater system. So a second alternative would be to just simply pour a sidewalk on top of the rip wrap. This is a tricky thing. It's, it's not, not a great idea. You have a shifting base of, of rocks. To pour concrete on top has, has a lot of challenges, and if a storm comes through and upsets the rocks, it upsets your, your sidewalk as well. But it is an option, and it's, it's an inexpensive option at 1.2 million dollars, or at least less expensive than some of the others. It would still, of course, if you have rocks on the other side, we would still need to protect the users with a railing. To possibly avoid impacting the, the revetment, again, according to whatever the, the Army Corps will allow us to do, we also considered a timber or a, a concrete boardwalk spanning atop the revetment. This would have a penetration of the geotextile fabric liner that's at the bottom. Hopefully, the Corps would, would view that as not a problem. Again, though, now you have two railings, not the, the best for visibility. Again, 2.3 million to 1.9 million, depending upon the option that's chosen in composite lumber versus pressure-treated, et cetera. In December, when you considered some aesthetic treatments to the rip wrap, the board asked to, to look at possibly pushing out and reclaiming the land that had been lost over many, many years and decades, as erosion took place in the bayou and before the Army Corps installed the rip wrap. We had a pre-application meeting with the FDEP. We had a pre-application meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they frowned upon the idea of reclaiming that land or basically filling Whitcomb Bayou. They practiced avoidance, reduction, and elimination of impacts, and that was a very significant impact in their mind. One of the ideas, though, that they did, if you wanted to go waterward with, with this walkway, whether it be a trail or a sidewalk, or however it's used, they did embrace that as an option. Of course, the same rules and regulations would apply to this boardwalk as applied to, to docks throughout the, the city and the county. Same approximate price for this construction. We don't have to deal with the rocks, but we are having to construct waterward, so it is a, a, a more expensive to construct waterward, but not having the cost of impacting the, the rocks. We would need submerged land determination and a submerged land lease to build out there. Excuse me. So Bob presented to you some options, very simple option of if, if can't come to terms in agreement on what type of, of trail or what type of, of sea level rise and flooding issues you want to prevent. Of course, an option, as he presented, was simply to cover the, the rocks with sod, with dirt, and with some rocks. So it would give a, you know, a hump. You can landscape it. Bob presented a, a cost of approximately $500,000. I extended that, in this cost here, I extended that berm down further south, even where there weren't any rocks, to, just a, an aesthetic feature, but obviously that can be limited back. That extra berm would also then help you with the inundation that's taking place. So I talked about permitting. We have met with FDEP and the Army Corps. It is an aquatic preserve. That is problematic from a DEP standpoint. Regardless of whether it is Army Corps permitting or DEP, seagrass surveys will be required, so there's going to be an upfront cost to do that. A submerged land lease will have to occur if we do something waterward. Of course, on the Army Corps side, remember, the Army Corps permits in two ways. One is regulatory, and one is through engineering. The 408 determination would have to go through engineering, and the permitting issues will have to go through the regulatory body. So there are a lot of nuances to things, but, but one of the biggest, in the Pinellas County, water navigation permitting is, is relatively easy compared to those other ones. But one of the biggest things is I go through all those options, and keep in mind that all those options have several sub-options. And if, if we could just, whether we're pursuing a brick grant application, and we take that forward, as Dr. Robinson presented and Arcadis presented, is coming up with a clear, definable project that we can take forward as a project that we can seek, seek a grant. We have a lot of the data collected for that consultant to come in and take this project over and to prepare a, a nice grant application. So I think that, that is something that we can do to minimize their efforts is to, to lower the number of options that we have. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Stoker, thank you for the presentation. We're going to go to public comments, and then we'll come back to us. Are there any public comments on this item? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. It's nice to see everybody in person, I must say. Mary Coburn, 15, I'm sorry, 425 South Spring Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. I'm here to speak, and my daughter Effie Mia is present. She's going to donate her time, as well as my sister Athena Sardulius, who's also resident of Tarpon Springs. As you know, I own property...
You have eight minutes.
Okay. I own property on the bayou. Extensive amount, if you add my parents' home and the Athena Apartments, which they own, it's probably half the block as far as impact. So we have experienced high, king tide flooding in the streets a lot more than we ever used to. We're getting a lot of 3.1, 3.2 tides, and when you combine that with a strong rain, there's a lot of water. And the thing about the water is, it's not just affecting my house and my neighborhood or the, the house that's at, at the edge of the bridge. It's also everybody that lives on the west end of town that happens to drive around the bayou, sunny day, they're on the bridge, they're at the top of the bridge, now there's five cars behind them, and there's saltwater everywhere in front of them, and they have no choice but to drive through the saltwater. I can't tell you how many vehicles we've turned over, living on the, on the bayou for 50 years. The rust on the bottom destroys cars, and it's, it's an inconvenience for every citizen. It's a huge impact, right there in that corner. I noticed on the topographical survey that you were referencing, you had very low, 1.6, 1.43, those measurements, the surveys. That's where the old boat ramp was, that area. I don't know if you were aware of that when you were doing this research, but right there, there used to be a boat ramp right next to the bridge. So that's why there's so much water coming in part of it, because that shoreline is, is very low. It was intentionally made low because it was utilized for a different purpose, and eventually disused. Your presentation discussed heavily the, the edge sidewalks and revetment, but it really didn't discuss the flooding as much as I would have liked. And, and for me, when I see numbers like 3.4 million dollars to put up concrete sidewalks across the street on something that's not particularly attractive but will be made so much more unattractive, and we already have a sidewalk that's running all around the bayou, I, I would prefer that the commission focus on the flooding issue. That is the biggest issue that, that presents right here. And if we're going to spend a million dollars or $2 million, we should be spending it on that corner to raise the street and raise the shoreline next to the bridge and put some drains in so that when the, the king tide meets the rain, we don't have water going all the way back into the streets, the backstreets there, because they do. It floods the entire parking lot of the Athena Apartments, goes, that one house on the corner there of Pineapple Street, that, that floods. That, that water comes right up in there, too. So it's a, it's an enormous problem. I really feel like it's a complete waste of our money right now to spend it on this revetment aesthetic project, because it's not necessary. You completed a beautiful sidewalk going all the way around. I think everybody's happy with it. You were even able to save the big tree. So the only thing I ask you, and I've, I've mentioned it to many of you, is to do something to make it easier to go from the bridge to the triangular piece that the city owns right next to the apartments. Paint the street, put a pedestrian crosswalk there, because we recently had an injury where a car, all the cars stopped, but there's confusion. So the pedestrian was hit by a car and, and suffered injury, which I don't know if the city attorney's going to have repercussions from that or not, but we'll, you never know. But there should be a, a crosswalk painted there. It's, it's, that's the biggest problem. Other than that, it's, it's easily walked all the way around the bayou, and people are enjoying it. To spend, focus this much money on something that's really not going to help flooding very much is going to be very unattractive and very expensive. I think the public will resent it, frankly, if you were to spend that kind of money on that and not deal with the flooding. To me, the most important thing, the focus should be, and, and the engineering report should be on our options and what they will cost and how to do it. That's what I'd like to see. And I know, I didn't, I didn't see that as much as I had hoped in this, in this report, but I, I appreciate the topographical because that really shows where the, where the water problem is. So I urge you to, to focus like a laser on the, on the flooding, because it's only going to get worse. Daytime flooding, the apartments, the two downstairs, they flood frequently, and we've, we've come up with some interesting ways with wood to block the door and seal it and caulk it, but those people spend a lot of time during the summer with their, not being able to get easily in and out of their apartments. It prevents the water from getting in for the most part, but it's, it's a big problem for them, and, and I would appreciate it very much if the City Commission took it very seriously and, and focused on the flood, a flood issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I just want to say, thank you. You stole my thunder. That's exactly where I was going to go. When I read this report, there was nothing to say about the flooding. This is all aesthetics. This is to make a sidewalk. I just don't understand how we could even begin to think of spending this kind of money without doing some sort of draining system. So far, we have check valves around the entire city, and I haven't seen one of them that actually functioned correctly. What I would have preferred to see, I mean, you, you just can't raise the, the sidewalk, you know, the, the roadway there, because then if it does get over the other side, it's going to remain. That whole area is a fiasco, and we should also have had a survey to figure out about putting some sort of a commercial French drain system in place, where as the water's coming in, it's pumped out. For years, I've been in the flood restoration business. Homes sit on top of standing water. The water rises under the home. The sump pump turns on, gets rid of the water. We could have that there, so that they don't have water in the streets. This young lady who was just speaking now is exactly what I was thinking. You come down off that bridge, there's no place for you to turn around. When you have no place to turn around, you're forced to ride through saltwater, the most destructive thing to every car in, in Tarpon. You can't come out of Spring Street, you can't move anywhere around there. So unless we're going to look at all options to do a cosmetic option to throw our city taxma, taxpayer money away, is just plain senseless. I don't even, and I hope you don't take this offensively, I don't even know why we did that survey and left out some of the most important things, what to do with water. What do other countries and states do with water? If we can't stop the water, we have to control it and put it back where it came from while that high tide is in place. And that's what this whole survey should have been on. How much is it to do a sort of commercial French drain versus spending all this money for a sidewalk that nobody walks on? I mean, we have a sidewalk on the other side. I sit and sometimes try to catch my breath, because some of this is such just plain common sense, and I don't see it being applied. And even if we take care of this particular problem, the rest of Whitcomb Bayou is flooding as well. We have flooding on, around all of the bayous. They all need to be addressed. So maybe we could try to at least spend our money and put it in one place and see if we could successfully control the water in one place, that we could then go to Pinellas County and Florida State and see if we can get a grant to deal with all of our other problems, because they're, they're here, they're coming. You heard by, by 2050, and, and I read in your report from, to the year... year twenty-one-hundred, we should be eight feet above sea level. So, we need to know, we, I'm, I'm not offended, or I'm not, um, a, opposed to building a wall, or, or a way to restrict it, but I, you, you have to be able to deal with it. Um, the water comes through the sewers. I don't care how high we build that wall. I watch the water just pouring out of the sewers. And I feel sorry for these people that are living there and, and have to deal with this water. It's the most destructive, it's more destructive than fire. So, as far as I'm concerned, I read this report, and it was a hundred percent co- cosmetic. I don't think it'll help us one iota.
Thank you. One, please.
Sylvia Jorano, eleven-twenty-two Lancer Lane. "I'm concerned, because I own commercial property on the corner of Martin Luther King and Alterna Nineteen. And even though I'm not by the bayou, we get flooding, not from the high tides, but from when it rains. The water is supposed to go down. I guess it drains through those storm sewers. When they did the repaving of the road, and that was done by the county, Alterna Nineteen, they made an engineering mistake in the water, because it cannot go down through the storm sewers fast enough. It backs out into my parking lot, and it destroys the parking lot. So that if you're taking care of elevating a street down at the bayou, it's going to cause more damage to Alterna Nineteen and my property. And that's my concern. Thank you."
Thank you. Next person, please.
Paul Robinson, nine-four-eight Bay Shore Drive. "I, I agree with what Mary Coburn said. The most important issue here is flooding. It's not a walkway. A walkway can be placed on top of whatever structure ultimately is built, but that would be, I would, I would suggest, that would be a secondary decision. Um, a lot of numbers got thrown out in a, in a very long presentation, a, a complicated presentation. One that was mentioned was two feet of sea level rise in fifty years. Let me remind you that the high projection by FEMA is three feet by twenty-fifty-five. And also remind you that high projections have a tendency over time to become intermediate projections, over time become less-than, or low-intermediate projections. Mother Nature keeps moving the goalposts on sea level rise, and she will accelerate how fast she moves the goalposts. All the five presentations' suggestions are fixed man-made structures. They are not permanent. They will deterior- deteriorate over time. They will have to be raised, improved, reworked, as sea level rise and flooding occur. Let's, let me just reiterate that Dr. Bolter and I are, stand ready and willing to work with the city, to come up with the funding from FEMA, brick grants, and any other grants, state grants, to, to add to those, um, and work with the city on creating a system that provides long-lasting protection. Thank you."
Thank you.
Here to Lacus five-one-four, Ashland Avenue. "Thank you, Mary. I'm sorry we spent all this money about putting a sidewalk, where we spent money already to put a sidewalk. Now, it's kind of glossed over, but just for informational purposes, on this page here, resiliency, sea level rise, historic data collected from a tide gauge in San Petersburg show water levels in Tampa Bay have already, already increased by approximately seven-point inches since nineteen forty-six. Fifty-four, twenty, sixty-four years. Projections, twenty-thirty, eleven years, nine years from now. Low NOAA estimate, half a foot. Intermediate, point-seven-nine. High, one-point-two-five. That's just within the next decade. Earlier, you heard Chief Young with the Emergency Management saying that storms have been getting worse and worse every year. Why is that? Climate change. Climate change. So, it's folly to worry about building a structure. And if I remember the sustainability report, Dr. Robertson presented an excellent presentation about a natural-type sea wall flooding-type process. And as Ms. Coburn mentioned, we need to focus on the flooding. I live on the opposite side of Whitcomb, and over by the church on the bayou, when that water rises, it comes out through the storm drain right there, and I can watch the water as it rises, one side from the bayou, one side from the storm drain, till eventually it meets in the road, it rises, and then it comes back down. I've already lost one car from rust underneath. Had to trade that in. Went to the auction, I'm sure. But we need to start focusing more on valid issues to deal with the flooding, not just the sponge docks. As it's been mentioned, we got bayous all around. Across from, just by where a car used to live, why'd you sell your house? It flooded over there. It backed up by Elaine's house. Come up through the storm drains. It's not just one spot, it's all over. We can't stop the sea level rise. We can only manage how we handle it. And spending money on a aesthetic walkway on the west side of Spring Boulevard is not going to solve the flooding issues. You need to change your focus, and maybe listen more to what the Sustainability Committee recommended, and finding ways to reduce the flooding, whether it's check valves, or road elevations, or something. But that needs to be the focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Panayotis Cuyas, five-nine-five Peninsula Ave- Avenue. "Regarding all this, uh, roads and sea level rise, we need to consider, uh, looking for grants. Um, I want to read an article from, uh, March sixth nineteen, uh, two thousand and eight, Tarpon City Manager is Finalist in Arizona, by Teresa Blackwell. Uh, and this is regarding Elven Posivich. Posivich has been city manager since nineteen ninety-nine, uh, longer than most city managers stay, and she has won several national awards over the past year," Valera said. Chris Alahuzis noted how successful Posivich has been at bringing grant money to the city for projects, including a twenty-point-one million dollar recent, recently for the city's water systems, and another one million dollars for restoring shoreline. So I think it's a prime example of us needing a cutting-edge, uh, city manager in the for, in the future to help this comprehensive plan in attacking sea walls and sea level rise, uh, in our community. Now, uh, from a couple few commissioners, this is all about the aesthetics of the road, but they, uh, the aesthetics of this walkway, of this boardwalk, which isn't needed. If you go walk South Spring Boulevard, it's beautiful as it is. You don't need no walkway, you don't need any of that. Um, three-point-five million dollars, I wonder how many roads in, in the historic area we can actually fix and move forward. It took one million dollars to take care of Court Street. I wonder what three-point-five million dollars can do for us. And I'd like to ask for your personal opinion, sir. Forget the boardwalk. What is your personal, uh, any professional opinion on-
Direct your comments to the chair.
Yes, sir. On South Spring Boulevard being fixed to the point where we don't have to look at this issue fifty to a hundred years down the road. We secured our sea wall structure. We've, and from the previous proposals before, I had mentioned, it has to be at the mean-high-high water level. I want to make sure this, uh, roundabout has been completely tabled, that it's not even considered again in the future. And I, I know we talk about the king tides, but even just stormy, stormy rain days, all of South Spring Boulevard is flooded. So, it may be with the correlation with the high tides, but it's not always just the high tides causing the flooding down that whole road. Um, and, let's see. And building a wall so the residents can't have a view of their property that they bought and invested ten many years ago, that's not right. That takes away from the, the beauty of the homes and what they invested in. So, like I said, I'd like to ask him for his personal opinion on how to fix that road, top to bottom. We got to uplift it, we got to add whole new sewer pipes, everything, top to bottom, to make sure this stuff is taken care of for the next fifty to a hundred years, because that's what we want to work on. Infrastructure in our town that needs to be addressed, needs to be addressed properly, with the proper grant money, and, uh, everybody working together to try to get this grant money. That way, we fix this city for generations to come. We are behind on infrastructure areas, we all know it. There's certain areas that are just flooding out of control, and we need a true comprehensive plan that I think the University of South Florida and USF might have to guide us getting these projects done with the way management is right now. So I'm a little concerned, but I wouldn't mind spending several million dollars to fix that road completely, to take, to take care of the sea level rise and flooding in that area, as opposed to spending three, four million dollars on a boardwalk that isn't needed for the beauty of that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none. We are now going to the commission comments. Mr. Stockton, I appreciate your, your findings and the diagrams that you provided to us. You made it very simple to understand the different options that we have. Um, regarding the five options that you presented to us, it's not really what I wanted to see, I'll be honest with you. What I was looking for was to, if we were able to extend the land the way it was before the erosion, uh, so people can actually enjoy the beauty of the, uh, of the bayou like we used to do years ago. Um, just like is the edge water daniery. Since we can't have that, um, I think we ought to concentrate now on the, uh, how to concentrate, how to, uh, to restore the issue, the, the flooding issue that we have at the corner. It's actually a project that initiated several years ago, and, uh, I will ask, um, my fellow commissioners to, um, to find, to actually, um, to decide, and what are, what are options we have, uh, to correct the flooding, uh, for the intersection Spring, South Spring Boulevard, and also Martin Luther King, uh, including how we're going to go find funding for it. Uh, I know that, um, Governor DeSantis is very favored to, uh, sea level rise. He already helped us on one project down in the sponge docks that we, uh, that we, actually has been approved already. So this is another project that we should be, uh, working with him to, uh, to find funding for. So, thank you for that. And for, with that, I'd like to go to the Vice Mayor Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate your presentation. Uh, I just have a couple, uh, comments to echo. Uh, I think we had some good pub- public comments tonight. Uh, I've mentioned this in the past, uh, I've mentioned it for many years. I think this is an opportunity for a legacy project for the many, many generations of Tarpon Springs. Um, I did like the alternative one, one B, I believe it was, um, that, to avoid anything with handrails, I think is important in this area. Um, there is, I believe there's still a safety issue in this area, um, overall, but I do believe that flooding should be the first and foremost, but also covering up the, the riprap should be at the top of a priority list as well. But I think that could be done with, um, addressing the flooding concerns. Uh, I am in support as well of, uh, the brick grants. I, I don't know the whole details behind that, but I do know that, uh, Dr. Robertson did a nice job presenting, uh, a couple months ago, um, overall. So, whatever we need to do to do that and pursue, uh, pursue that, I think is a great idea. Um, there's a, a lot of opportunities here. We've got a lot of great, um, individuals who are willing to help, uh, turn the tide for Tarpon, and also our Sustainability Group. Um, Bob, appreciate your help with this as well, too. I know this has been ongoing for a couple years, uh, and trying to figure out what the best solution is. Um, we've been handed a, a situation where the shoreline was restored, um, in a certain way that wasn't necessarily, um, desirable by the public, but the good thing is that it has been, um, solidified, so we're not going to lose the road to the bayou, which is a positive. Um, the other positive is, we have a lot of, um, interest in the public to see this area improve, um, so I think that's an important part as well. Something that Speaker Sprouls talked about when he was at Rusty Bellies was, um, talking about the, the grants that the state is going to have for studies that are going to be completed. Um, and then in the next step would be actually applying for the funds to complete the projects that the study, has studied. Um, so I'm looking forward to, uh, the city manager working with, um, Speaker Sprouls' office, um, and, uh, other staff members and any other organizations as well, too, to, uh, identify these areas, to, uh, continue to study these areas and getting more funding. But at the end of the day, I'm, I'm in support of working, um, if we can, with what Dr. Robertson brought up, um, a few months ago, and, um, looking forward to, to addressing flooding, uh, in Tarpon Springs as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Terrapini.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thanks for the presentation. I think that it's not all lost with some of the data that was generated. Um, I had a conversation with a resident yesterday, and I'm appreciative and thankful for that conversation, because it made me kind of dig back to the origin of when this discussion started taking place, with this commission passed in present. Um, and I, and I really think that the origin began with not only aesthetics, but also pedestrian safety. And at the time, when this conversation started, we, we had breaks in the sidewalks, not just physical breaks, but no sidewalk. Um, and we had people, pedestrians, bikers, et cetera, that were walking in the street. Um, since, since then, we have done several surveys with residents in the surrounding area, um, and we've also mitigated some of the concerns regarding pedestrian safety with added sidewalks. And there was a lot of, of staff work, uh, with the residents to try and make sure that everybody's needs were being met, and that we had, uh, a good project moving forward. So, since the, the origin of this discussion, the main concern, which was pedestrian safety, has since been taken care of. So for me, that is, um, something that I think we should all remember. Um, now that the sidewalks are in place and they're being utilized by the public, and, uh, we no longer have that concern, I do think that it is important for us to reprioritize in, as it relates to flooding, and less of trying to spend a couple million dollars on a, on a boardwalk project. Um, so I do think that it is important to consider the flooding as, as our focus, and I do think that the roundabout project did get a, a bad rap, um, which often happens on Facebook, but I, I just think it's important to understand that that concept was a, in, in large part for flooding in terms of a vault under the roundabout. So, if you look at this project, and again, no engineer here, but if you look at the project in terms of flooding and how you're going to mitigate for that, um, I think that really, at some point, aside from check valves and maybe, uh, building up the bank in some areas where there was, uh, where there is, uh, less height, or there was an old boat ramp, I think ultimately at the end of the day, in order to really achieve success here, we're going to have to have some kind of underground vault to hold the storm water. If you just simply pump it, I don't know where you're going to pump the water, but where there's not already high tide. So if you have a high tide and there's water in the intersection, where are you going to pump the water to? So again, no engineer, but I think at some point, a vault's going to be necessary, coupled with backflow prevention, um, and also potentially some, some buildup of the, of the bank or sea wall. At some point, at, once that's all done, if the commission in the future wanted to revisit and try and create this lasting, uh, walkable vista for the public that goes from South Spring Boulevard to Gulf, Gulf Road, that would be great. Um, but I think it's important we shift our focus and prioritize, uh, flooding in this area. Thank you.
Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, I did have a couple of questions, which you may not be able to answer for me now. I would just ask that, you know, you email me sometime in the coming weeks. That's for Mr. Robertson. Um, what would be the feasibility and cost of elevating the road?
That's a great question. So, so a- again, if you take away nothing from, from this presentation, take away that, that I didn't say those were three projects, but three concerns, and all of those concerns can be rolled into the same project. And the reason why the, the city is looking at, at brick, uh, grants is because they're fifty million dollars worth of, of potential funding. It's extremely expensive. The, the feasibility of raising the road is high. That is a very viable solution. However, you heard comments about today, there's already flooding into residences. So if you raise the roadway, you don't necessarily solve that problem, you may make that problem worse. You can put berms and walls in, and you can put pumps in, and, and, and those are all strategies- And those are all strategies that are viable, but can be very expensive and can be well-supported by a brick grant. And a very thorough study, this at the best was a cursory review of the issues. But a very thorough sustainability study would be required to truly answer those questions. And in that, you can then produce a product that has living shorelines and has potentially trails or bike lanes or improved facilities. But it's all a holistic approach, and it's very expensive.
So, do you think we would need to go out and get another study done to determine all of our options for this area? Or, I know you mentioned the brick grants to start with.
The brick grant needs a project, right? You can't apply for a brick grant, or any grant for that matter, with a problem, with a series of concerns. So, that's kind of why I close with, you need a definable project. Because that's what you're going to take to that funding request. You're going to say, here's my problem. And again, Dr. Robinson and the other doctor can speak to the brick grant process better than I can. But you need to show that you have the problem, and this is my solution for that problem. Will you please help me fund it? And so, right now, we have a lot of ideas and a lot of options and a lot of concerns. But that needs to become a project that can be definable and that can have a benefit to cost analysis that you can then go and say, by funding this project, we can prevent loss and save money.
Okay. So, it sounds like maybe staff would need to put together a list of our potential options to pursue. And I don't know if we would need an agenda item, or if it would be something better discussed at a work session. I hate to add to our long list of work sessions that we need to have done. But that seems like something just, I'm trying to think of the next steps to move this forward. So, we don't just do this presentation tonight, and then, you know, five months from now, we look back and we say, hey, that was a good presentation. So, I'm sure staff can get with us and the board and send out an email and figure out where to go from here. But this is definitely something I'd like to see action on sooner rather than later. A resident did mention a crosswalk in that area. It's a four-way stop. It's one of the most chaotic intersections, especially when it's half underwater all the time. What would be the feasibility of getting a crosswalk there, at least to that middle section?
Jeff Young is already working, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Carr already sent that. We also heard from a resident. So, we're looking at that intersection right now.
Awesome. Yeah, I mean, overall, I think we addressed the pedestrian safety issue with the crosswalk on the other side of the road. I don't really want to spend any money on a boardwalk or anything like that. Even if the costs were cut in half, I just really couldn't justify it without addressing the flooding. But again, I do think we got some good information out of this presentation and looking forward to moving forward with an actual action.
Commissioner Lecuero?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'll be honest with you, I've seen the cross-sections before of what was proposed a long time ago. And don't take this the wrong way, but I was more interested in hearing what you said as far as the flooding mitigation, which I heard was the check valves and berms is pretty much it. And we had decided back in October that, when we had discussions at that time with sidewalks and on the west side, that what we needed to do was look at things comprehensively, solve the flooding problem, and anything that we would do with sidewalks would be ancillary. Since then, we installed the sidewalks on the east side, which works well. My observation tonight, and from what I keep hearing, is that, you know, we've got our staff working on a whole lot of things. I mean, I'm not sure how many projects Mr. Robertson has, maybe thirty, forty, fifty, that you've got listed. And here is one of the biggest issues that we've got in Tarpon Springs. Sea level rise, inundation, not just South Spring Boulevard, but all over town. I've been saying we've got a half a dozen locations that we need in-ground pumping stations. You know, we pat ourselves on the back, which I think was exemplary, that we got money for Dotakines in Athens. But we've also got the same issue just down the street at Hope Street. So, I would really, I think it's unfair, I've said this before, with some of the sustainability issues, that we keep using our staff to load more and more on them, thinking that that's good enough. And I really think we need a sustainability coordinator here. And along with the same thing with this project, I think it's unfair to have something of such large magnitude to place in Mr. Robertson's lap and to work with Cardinal, who's also working on a lot of our projects. I'd like to go back, back in April thirteenth when... And by the way, I've gone back to all the videos beginning in October, listened to those, listened to the commission's comments, and the commission was focused on flooding. But we seem to kind of, and it's not the commission, it's basically what the staff brings back to us because of everything else that they do as well. April thirteenth, we had the presentation by Dr. Robertson and Dr. Bolter of Arcadis. They presented the living seawall and living shoreline concepts. Mayor, you mentioned, reminded Dr. Bolter that Whitcomb Boulevard is largely county. Everybody recognized that, Dr. Bolter and Dr. Robinson. I reached out to County Chairman Eggers with a letter of introduction for Dr. Robertson. He's, Dr. Robinson, he's got a meeting with him next week on Tuesday to go over the Arcadis project for that part of the county. So, we've been working along the line, which I thought was direction back in April. And I honestly was waiting for a work session, although in listening to the video, we really didn't give clear guidance to the city manager of whether we would do a work session or an agenda item. So, we wound up with an agenda item. But I'd had the Arcadis's proposal of how they would approach this problem for a month or two, waiting for the work session, so we could bring that back to you. And I regret trying to get that to you earlier today, recognizing that what I saw, what the issues were. I really think we need to have a focused look. The issues that we've got are not different than what they have in the Netherlands, Chicago, New Orleans. There's many areas below sea level in those locations. And they would use the same type of system that we would have to implement here, but not on a full-time basis, but for tides. I think much of the title information that you showed didn't take into account winds. We've got a very unique situation with the Anclou River, with north and south winds either pulls the water out or pushes the water in and compounds the effects of what you see with zero wind speed. So, we've got to have that kind of understanding of what the issues are in order to come with a solution that's gonna work. Dr. Bolter, I think it was Dr., I'm sorry, maybe Vice Mayor Carr, or maybe Commissioner Donovan, asked about the price. Dr. Bolter gave a price of, and I think it's consistent with what you're saying. There were two parts to that. One was the planning phase. In other words, let's look at what we need to do here. And then the next part was the project. The planning phase was to obtain a grant for the planning of about three hundred thousand dollars. Arcadis's fee, I think, was ten to fifteen thousand dollars to put that package together to obtain that planning grant. Dr. Bolter also said that we would get seventy-five percent of that reimbursed also, and I hope this is accurate, because that's what she said, we would also be reimbursed with what we've spent. For example, the topographical survey with George F. Young that we've done. We would be reimbursed for that as well. So, once that plan is complete with a concept of what we're proposing, very comprehensive, what all the residents are saying, what the commissioners are saying, then you would pursue the Phase Two. And that price tag, I think, was, I think, twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars for the grant application process. And that would be a multimillion-dollar grant that we would pursue. And Dr. Bolter, and I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but we were talking about a few million dollars as far as the brick, but it's now in the hundreds of millions, if I could stand corrected on that. That FEMA has upped the amount of money that's gonna be available. Tarpon is very unique in Pinellas County. We're probably the lowest city in Pinellas County. And yet, the systems that we talk about with the in-ground vaults and things are already in use in Clow Water, Largo, where there's local basins. The water doesn't drain away. When it rains, all the water comes and accumulates in a local area. And it doesn't go away unless it percolates. But when you've got all the impervious surface, it's just gonna sit there. So, in-ground pumps have been installed, and that pumps that water out. So, the concepts are not new. I just think we need to have a focused look on this. I'd like to get some agreement on the part of the commission. I know everybody's got some ideas, and everybody's looking for ideas. I don't have a solution for this, but I think Arcadis does. Whether it's in-ground vaults, living shorelines, living seawalls, I'd like to leave it to the expert to come up with these solutions rather than the commission suggesting ways. Let them come up with the planning process to obtain the three hundred thousand dollar grant for the plan, and then develop the plan with that money, and then pursue the construction grant. It won't happen, it's not gonna happen overnight. On the other hand, I'm much, I feel much more confident that we're gonna have a solution that's gonna work for the city long-term and will understand what the longevity of that solution's gonna be. Let's say in twenty fifty, twenty sixty, we're gonna have to do something else. But at least there'll be some projected timeframe of what the lifespan would be of what we do, do with regard to sea level rise. So, that's my proposal to you. I think Dr. Robertson, Dr. Robinson is still doing his part in meeting with County Commissioner Eggers to see if we can get some participation there. Mr. Robertson, I do recall that we, as part of this data collection, we were gonna check with the county to see, they've got their own survey crews, to see what they had available for Whitcomb Boulevard. Did we do that, do you know?
I don't, but did you coordinate with the county on that?
I requested that, and I didn't get anything back. I can check that.
Okay. We'll follow up on that.
But we've, what the money we've spent is not to waste. That's not an issue with me. As a matter of fact, we need more data. So, if we could continue following up, trying to obtain that data.
Sure.
But again, I just think that it's unfair to the staff to continue tasking them with this such a challenging project when they've got so many other projects that they're a little more routine, straightforward, that they can get done. And I think that they need some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I am requesting a motion to give a direction to city manager Mr. Lecuero to bring different options on how to correct the flooding problem that we have on Spring, South Spring Boulevard, and Marlotho King, including funding for the project. I agree with, we all agree that the flooding is the biggest issue that we got, and purification comes second. So, we've gotta work on that. In regards to Commissioner Vaticiatus, in regards to getting the vendor, the Arcurius, we do have a selection process. I don't think we should just hire a company without going through the process that we have in place. So, I'm requesting to have a motion to give Mr. Lecuero a direction to bring different options back to us and how we're going to, including funding for this project. Because this project is very important. If you remember, I initiated this project several years ago because sea level rise is very important to all of us, and...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Doesn't Cardinal have the ability to subcontract to Arcadis? Isn't our contract set up with you to be able to do that?
We have, we would have to add them as a sub consultant.
But can it be amended to do that?
Certainly.
So, that problem is solved, Mayor?
No, it's not solved. In my opinion, it's not solved.
You just said it was solved.
Well, what I'm saying is, we need to have a motion so we can bring in different options on how to correct the problem. That's what I'm looking for. If you wanna make a motion, something else, go ahead, but that's what I'm looking for.
I'm waiting to hear your motion, Mayor.
Well, I'm asking one of the... Thanks for your opinion, sir.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, give me a second. I'll make a motion to direct city manager to research the best path for a solution to address the rising tides, either through state grants or federal grants, and the best avenue to use if it's a third-party company. I would ask that the city manager would evaluate the procurement process, the best way to go, but to also lean on the support of our nonprofit Turn for Tide here locally and also the Sustainability Committee on any suggestions or recommendations as well to address the Whitcomb Bayou area and also the other low-lying areas within Tarpon Springs. I feel like we should put some type of timeframe on it as well. City manager, is that something that you wish to share a little bit about that might be good to add to that? It's two months.
Probably. If we're talking about other areas, I think if we stick strictly to this area for now, if we start getting into other areas, then that's just, you know, gonna enhance the time.
Okay.
But come back to you approximately, you know, like we did. I think we've done these, you know, two or three, you know, sixty to ninety days period.
Yeah, I think two months is sufficient for the Whitcomb Bayou area.
Do we have a second?
Just to clarify the motion, the motion is strictly for the Whitcomb Bayou?
Yes.
All right, second.
Could, yeah, it's just a point of order. Does somebody explain the motion to me? Don't give me the wrong, take me the wrong way. You said a lot, and I'm not sure exactly what that direction is. That we're, there were a number of things that you told the city manager to do, and I'm not sure what they are.
Yeah, I'll just clarify real quick. It's basically gives the city manager our direction that we wanna see Whitcomb Bayou addressed. We wanna see some type of grant funding, either through state or federal funding. Whatever the avenues they are, we don't know what all those are myself. I know we had a great presentation from Dr. Robinson and the third-party, but I'm not sure if that's the best avenue to take. But I would like him, our city manager, to reach out at least to Turn for Tide and our Sustainability Group to see what else is out there as an avenue. If Arcadis is the best way, awesome, let's move forward. Let's have that be our presentation two months from now.
We're not excluding the living seawalls.
No, absolutely not. No, that's an important part of all of this.
Okay.
Directly as it relates to flooding?
Absolutely.
And we're not pursuing sidewalks at the moment?
That's just like a byproduct of the project.
Okay, you agree with that?
Yep.
Second. Any other comments on that?
I think we had enough.
I'll support that as long as it just doesn't place the burden of responsibility on the staff to continue with this down the road. I really think we need some help with this. Somebody that's done this before, that knows what, it's been done elsewhere, somebody that knows what to do and to apply what those solutions were to Tarpon Springs. I think that continuing to use our staff and Cardinal is unfair to them, and I just don't think that we'll wind up with the optimal solution on that. But I'll support this motion if it includes what I just described.
For clarity, I think, for clarity, I talked about a third-party specifically.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiatus?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. We're gonna take five minutes recess, we'll be back. Thank you. Thank you. We now reconvene the BOC meeting at 9:20 PM. We're now going to the consent agenda. Number four is satisfaction, a release of liens. Number five is special event, shop the ducks, September, October, November, December 2021. Number six is to authorize execution of license agreement for park use. Number seven is the increase file number 210034CAM, utilize the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Contract Number 15JLP023 for HVAC products installation services and related products and services. The award file number 210157, and JL, single source purchase of citywide Ethernet and related services. And number nine is internal auditor charter. Any of the items that you'd like to pull?
I'd like to talk about number nine, not necessarily pull it though.
I'd like six and nine.
Want to pull six and nine, okay. Any public comments on the items four, five, seven, eight? I hear none. Any commission comments? Chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved, second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Loises.
Yes. Number six is to authorize execution of license agreement for park use. It was pulled by Commissioner Vaticiotes.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I had some questions that I posed to the city manager, and he was good enough to forward them to Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith clarified it. And I just want to confirm that the memorandum I received, I don't think you, you received it, but there were some questions that I had concerning the, the person that we were entering into the agreement. And from what your memorandum said, you had worked with them for seven years already. In what capacity, have we had an agreement with them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, is this the same type of agreement that we're doing with them?
It's very similar.
Let's introduce you.
I'm sorry, Duffy Smith.
This is Duffy Smith of the Recreation Division.
The two Smiths.
It's the Smith brothers. It's very similar agreement. We've had a working yearly agreement with them over the years, and this past few months, we decided to just take a look at ourselves, make sure with the ordinance that got passed in 2019, directly relating to this issue, we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with what we were doing.
So, this, basically what you're doing with what we're doing right now is formalizing the same thing that you've been doing for seven years?
Yes, sir, making sure it was in compliance with the ordinance that passed in 2019.
Okay, thank you. That, that just, I, that's very helpful information to me, so, thank you very much. Who's the gentleman behind you, standing there?
Thank you, Commissioner. If I may take the moment, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. I just wanna say, when our former Recreation Superintendent relocated to another part of the state earlier this year, we went out with a nationwide search, and went through an extensive process, and we found someone that's a great fit for our community with great experience. His name is Jamie Taylor, and I'd like to introduce him to you here.
Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. True honor being here, I'm very excited. New to the area, I've got family in Safety Harbor. Spent the last 12 years in municipal recreation out in Colorado, so traded the mountains in for the beach. I spent some time in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, getting my, my degree down there. Very, very excited to be here. Everyone's been very helpful so far for the transition. Love making positive impact on the citizens of towns and cities where I've lived in the past, and just excited to bring some new energy here, and then do the same, and meet some needs, and, you know, make people's lives better each day, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, welcome to Tarpon Springs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you pulled number nine, which is the internal audit charter?
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Billy, I guess, to the city as a resident. He had a chance to interview with us, and I think it's a, an avenue that we can recognize him and put him up on the podium just to say hello and introduce himself to all the residents that are watching.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I wanna take this opportunity as well to thank the board for your vote of confidence. And I'd also like to thank the city manager and his staff. They've been very helpful, very accommodating this, this last, the last month or so I've been here, and I do appreciate it. And for those of you that all know me, I'm Billy Poulos. I'm the new internal auditor here in Tarpon. Did you have any questions, Commissioners, about the charter that I put in front of you?
I don't have anything specific to this. Someone else may.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna go to public comments, Mr. Poulos. We'll come back if we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any public comments on the items six and seven, six and nine? Hear none?
Panayotis Kulyas, 595 Peninsula Avenue. I'm looking at the scope of the internal auditor activities. The scope of the internal auditor activities encompasses, but is not limited to, or objections examine, examinations of evidence for the purpose of providing independent assessments to the BOC and city management. The actions of the city of Tarpon Springs, city manager, employees, vendors, consultants, and contractors are in compliance with the appropriate policies, procedures, and applicable laws, regulations, and government standards. Operations or programs are being carried out effectively and efficiently. Established processes and systems enable compliance with policies, procedure, laws, and regulations. Now, the responsibility of the internal auditor has the responsibility to submit at least annually to the city manager and a BOC a risk-based internal audit plan for review and approval. Communicate to the BOC an impact of resource limitations on internal audit plan. Review and adjust the internal audit plan as necessary in response to changes in the city's business, risks, operations, programs, systems, and controls. Communicate to the city manager and the BOC any significant interim changes to the internal audit plan. Follow up on engagement findings and corrective actions, and report periodically to the city manager and the BOC any corrective actions not effectively implemented. You guys are gonna have to clarify with me how the internal auditor's supposed to be reporting to the city manager. If I understand the structure of our government, it's the people up top, the board, and then the four subsets of our city clerk, our city attorney, our auditor, and our city manager. So, what relationship are we gonna be growing here where he's reporting to the BOC when he's only, or to the city manager when he's supposed to be reporting to the BOC? And this issue's been a long-going issue for a very long time, starting back from the 70s going forward, about how this internal auditor was pushed out to have external auditing on certain simple checks and balances within our system, as well as the same stuff that happened here in the 2000s, in the late 2000s, that caused this big issue to where we were year after year trying to search for one, bad communication, we never got the internal auditor for all those reasons unknown. We have people on the Charter Review Committee who were handpicked by certain people of government to help spin up opinions and have our attorney as well spin up an opinion that we didn't need an internal auditor. Well, as you saw, as a vast majority of the citizens voted that we did have one, I wanna go on the record that this auditor isn't reporting to the city manager, because I don't understand what that point is. He's still in separate entity. So, let's make sure we get that scope under work corrected, and regarding, are the advice that have to live inside the city limit or not? I'd like to know, and let's see where the future holds with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Poulos? I'm not gonna ask you any question, but just for clarification, you're reporting to the BOC, but you work with the staff?
That's correct. And I thought I made that clear in the county charter. That's actually just boilerplate language. Most auditors would see this and say, yeah, that's, that's just boilerplate. Also, in terms of the residency requirement, there's no residency requirement in the, in the, in the city charter, and I think that was already addressed in the, in the interview process.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments, questions?
Mr. Poulos? Mr. Poulos? Couple of things. One, you've included the minor comments that the city attorney had recommended?
Yes, yes, and I've updated the draft into a final and sent it over to the city manager's office for inclusion in the record.
I'm very much in line with complete independence, and I see in the responsibility section of your audit agreement that the, the audit charter, basically it says, submit, the very first sentence, submit at least annually to the city manager and the BOC a risk-based internal audit plan for review and approval. Are you intending that the city manager approve your audit plan?
No, sir. Let me address that. There's, there's two points I wanna make. Number one, I believe it says in the charter that I have to do a risk-based assessment, which obviously I plan on doing. Number two, to answer your question directly, it says submit at least annually to the city manager and the BOC a risk-based internal audit plan for review and approval. I could probably word that a little differently. Basically, just, just like the charter, I sent it over to the city manager just for him to review, but ultimately you all approved it.
I don't have a problem with the city manager reviewing anything that you do. You know, just for him to know what you're doing.
Absolutely.
But as far as the approval, it gets back to what the mayor was asking about, that you're, you know, you work for the commission, so...
Absolutely.
This, this that we have for us tonight, we can make a motion to have that wording clarified, Mayor. Is that, or maybe I could ask the city attorney that?
You can just take out the words "to the city manager", and, and so it just reflects submit at least annual, annually to the BOC for a risk-based internal audit plan for review and approval. You can just take out the reference to the city manager, and that addresses the issue, I think.
And informally, Mr. Poulos could work with the city manager. Okay.
Either that, or you, what you could do is, is to have the, add to the very end of the sentence, and the BOC risks an audit for plan and review and approval by the BOC, and that would keep the city manager there, but it's the only, the approval would be required by the BOC. It'd probably be the better way to do it that way.
It would be better to do it that last way, that you just...
Right, I think so. Approval by the BOC.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments? I need a motion for item number six and number nine.
Move to approve with the condition that we amend the language in the first sentence in the responsibility section to remove the city manager and leave it to the, submit at least annually to the BOC a risk-based internal audit plan for review and approval, and...
No, I was suggesting that you leave city manager in there, so it would read submit at least annually to the city manager and the BOC a risk-based internal audit plan for review and approval by the BOC. So, you're just adding three words at the very end of that sentence, "by the BOC or Board of Commissioners".
May I just reference the city attorney's comment? And Ms. Jacobs, is that, can you pick that up? If I reference the city attorney's comment on that recommendation? So, the motion is to approve the, geez, what are we calling it?
Item six and nine.
The internal audit charter, with the condition of amending the first sentence and responsibilities section as described by the city attorney.
Second.
Include, also include item number six as well? Include number six on your, on your motion?
And to include number six for approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call.
Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Loises.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Poulos. Next is item number 10, to authorize execution of a contract for purchase of property lots 9, 10, 21, 22 of Block 9, Ennis Park Extension. Staff reporter?
Yes, this was an opportunity that came up. As you know, we've had land next to American Legion Post 46 land for a long time. This piece of property we're talking about, if you envision, they sold the property that was the nursery school. They sold that. Next to it, of course, is our fire department in the tower. We own the four pieces of lands that are mostly wetlands and an area where stormwater goes, and this piece... And this piece is the four lots right below it. So, this is a perfect opportunity to, again, pick up a piece of land that's adjacent to a good section of wetlands and preserved lands that we already have for many reasons. Of course, one of the main reasons is the preservation of it and the opportunity for us to get property that's a wetland and keep it as such. It could help us possibly if we decide to build the future fire department, it may help with stormwater. Of course, in the future, we'll have the ability to upgrade those wetlands and, you know, do better things for the environment with that land. And so, it was an opportunity, we've got land next to it, we've got a fund that provides for this. So, it just made sense to work with the American Legion Post when they, when we came with the knowledge that they were gonna, that needed to sell that property, to have that, so we'd have the piece of the fire department and, of course, the tower and back, and then our four pieces and those four pieces all together for future preservation against, and possible stormwater and other uses and stuff. So, it was a perfect opportunity, also in negotiating that deal, if you remember, there is a reverter clause in the property that the present fire station is on, it's always been there. We learned that when we had the issue with the tower and the pieces of lands. American Legion Post forty-six is agreed, and you'll see in the city attorney's contract that he worked up, that they will, that they will take away that reverter clause, which, which could in the future, if we didn't have any use for that property, the property would revert back to them. This would give us that fire station, property where the fire station presently on, free and clear to us. And that's negotiated into the contract to sign, so this is a win-win for the American Legion Post, for us. And I want to bring this forward for authorization to purchase this piece of land for forty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice, we go to public comments of this item, are there any public comments of this item? Here none? The chair will detain a motion.
Mayor, I have a question.
If you make a motion, then we can go ahead.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Licorice, in talking with you this morning, you said that this property is fully under contract, right?
Yes, and that provision is fully under the contract and signed by them.
The reason I ask is the contract and the backup is not signed by the seller, so I just wanted to make sure that before we discuss it any further, that you have control of this.
Yes, that was before, Mr. Trask has got the signature and we do have a signed contract.
Yeah, I don't have any issue, I just wanna make sure that.
Yes.
You know, we have control before we discuss it further. Mr. Trask, in your additional terms, can you just talk a little bit about the additional term B and C in terms of the code of ordinances and the Florida statute that you're referencing?
So, there, two dash two one six of the city code, it references how you were to purchase or sell property. And so, we just wanted to make sure that everybody was in agreement, that we have a process that we have to follow. We're in the middle of that process now and that's covered.
Okay.
And as for the provisions of one sixty-six oh four five, I believe that is the section that requires the appraisal to be done. And so, we do have on standby, we're waiting for your authorization, but we do have an appraiser that is on standby to go ahead and do that appraisal. We received that, it, there weren't many out there that were interested in doing the appraisal on this property because it's such a small fee. But we were able to find an appraisal group, Atkinson Group, Billy Atkinson's firm, to do it for the cost of eight hundred dollars for the appraisal for four lots.
And I'm assuming Mr. Atkinson is on our approved vendor list?
So, I don't know the answer to that question, I would rely upon the city manager. I can tell you that he has been used by the cities of Oldsmar, I believe, and Bel Air Bluffs in the past, maybe even Tarpon. So, he's been used by other municipalities.
I'm familiar with him, I know who he is, but I just wanted to make sure that he was on our approved, approved list. I don't have any further questions, mayor, thank you.
Any other comments on this item?
Just a couple, real quick. This brings into the light the fund that we have to purchase property with. And a couple of things we talked about, I think was looking at funding this fund on an annual basis with budget, budgets.
It was in this upcoming budget to look at that, yes.
And then also with some type of code enforcement fines as well, so.
Yes.
That's something we can bring up in the near future to talk further.
Yes, a slave to bring up during our budget process.
Great, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Donovan, any comments?
My only question would just be, I'd love to see it purchased to preserve as a passive park or green space. I just was wondering what the possible stormwater needs would be, would that just be like a runoff site or?
Yes, pretty much that, and because it's got wetlands on there and stuff, maybe we've got on our property a pond, maybe a little bit bigger pond that may go on it, but it'd be mostly, again, be able to use for preserve park, that sort of thing and stuff. It wouldn't be any structures or anything going on that property.
Okay, awesome. Well, I think this purchase is a great step in the right direction for us. I gotta be honest, when I looked at the forty thousand dollar, the forty thousand dollars that we had in the land preservation fund, I thought we're never gonna be able to purchase anything with that. I thought it was gonna have to sit there and wait and wait and wait until it was funded more adequately, but I'm really pleased to see this go through, so thank you to staff.
I just wanna ask city manager, there's no cleanup or maintenance on this, or leave it in the natural state?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think it's an excellent purchase.
I also like to comment that this is to, I support this purchase of this property for forty thousand dollars. I think it's a very good price, it's the market value. And also can be used for, you know, for the fire station, if we ever need to build a new fire station. Mr. Licorice, the land preservation fund, can you tell us how this money was accumulated, fifty thousand dollars?
I can't remember the exact process we did, but we put together this fund and, you know, we had talked about other ways in the past of doing something to put money away to be able to buy lands like this. So, I think we're up to one hundred, I think we used forty or fifty on another piece of land a while ago, and I think it's only been used once. I think this will be the second usage of that property specifically in the budget, so we're able to obtain property like this that would come up to preserve.
Do we budget in anything on this fund?
Not at this time, but it's already been brought up by, to be talked about in this budget to maybe start doing that.
Because that's a very good idea to have that.
I'll give you a little background, mayor. There was a Commissioner Larson initiative. And we sold a piece of city property, a portion of the sale went to the preservation fund, so initial funding came from the sale of the nursing home.
Nursing home, that's right.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Panty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the ordinance and resolutions, item number eleven A and eleven B are related. These items will be discussed together, but we're gonna vote separately. The. Item number eleven A, which is the application twenty-one, twenty-two, on forty-one, six, eighty, US nineteen. This is the ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero four, rezoning, this is the first reading, this is a quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read the title and it will explain the process of the quasi-traditional.
Thank you, mayor. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero four, in ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the city of Tarpon Springs for zero point six one acres, more or less, of real property located at four-one-six-eight-zero, US Highway nineteen north, Tarpon Pines Associates Track C, on the southwest corner of US Highway nineteen north and east Pine Street, from zoning designation IR, industrial restricted, to zoning designation HB, highway business, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That was reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero four by title only. I'll read the quasi-traditional procedures. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, I need to swear in everyone that's gonna speak on this agenda item, if you could stand up, raise your right hand, if you swore under oath. Swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. So, city staff would make its presentation first, mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Renee Vincent, Planning Director.
Hey Renee, can you pull that light down?
Oh, yeah. Okay, I can tear it down. All right, let's not destroy the equipment.
That's worse.
Yeah, that is worse. Can you make it like flat, or it's pointing towards the stand?
How about that?
That's perfect.
Is that better? All right. Again, Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director. This is application twenty-one dash twenty-two. This is an application for land use and rezoning for property up on US nineteen. This is the parcel in question, it's a vacant, really it was built as a retail building even though it's in an industrial land use category. This is the Auto Zone, this is the Lowe's. So, the applicant is requesting to amend the land use and zoning to basically match, you know, how the building was constructed as a retail use. This is just a, the site plan as it exists today, they're not proposing any changes at this point in time to the site plan. So, the current zoning on the property, excuse me, the current land use is industrial limited, it's proposed to go to commercial general. The current zoning is industrial restricted and it's proposed to go to highway business. And then really the applicant is seeking to have the property, you know, reflect the past and future, you know, desired commercial use of the property. This will also require an amendment to the countywide plan map to take it from employment category to retail and services. When we looked at this kind of in-depth, we started to notice that really this whole area has kind of some inconsistent land use and zoning, you know, based on what's on the ground and what was built. We have actually reached out to the owners of Auto Zone as well as the Life Storage Mini Warehouse property, because you can see it's in a split land use and zoning. So, we'd like to get that cleaned up in the future, as well as get the Auto Zone into an appropriate land use and zoning. We'll work on that with the owners in the future, they're not part of this, but I did wanna bring that out, that we have reached out to them to try to kind of clean up this area of the map. And the same thing with the zoning, you can see the splits and the inappropriate or inconsistent zoning with the actual uses. We do find that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies, and we have reached out to Ford Pinellas initially on the change from retail and service to retail and services. If you've paid any attention to the countywide plan changes in the, you know, recently, they do take a hard look at when you're taking something out of an employment category because there is obviously a countywide emphasis on preserving those designations, but we think that they will be supportive of this. We do find it consistent with our plan review criteria for rezoning. Staff does recommend approval of both the ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh five, which is a future land use map amendment, and ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh four, which is the zoning atlas amendment. We did do posted notice and notices in the mail, and we've had no public comments on this, received no public comments. Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this on May seventeenth, they did recommend approval, there was one dissent, dissenting vote who expressed some concerns about with it going to highway business, the ability for an adult use perhaps in the area. I don't think they actually were actually opposed to the rezoning, they wanted to be able to put a condition, and since they can't condition or rezoning, they voted against it. So, with that, I will stop, I will enter into the record all the agenda backup that was in your packet and the staff reporting on this, thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Vincent by the commission?
Ms. Vincent, you answered my question, I was just gonna ask you the, what the other, what's the zoning on the other properties, and you cover that as well, so, which is gonna be consistent, but doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, seeing none? Anyone else in the city making a presentation, Renee or just you?
Not for the city, the applicant does have a presentation that they would like to go through.
Okay, does the applicant step forward, please? Yes. Come on over here.
The one in the mirror, please.
Well, she's got it, oh, okay. Mark, can you switch that?
Thank you. Jamie Mayer for the applicant from the law firm Hillward Henderson, one oh one East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite thirty-seven hundred Tampa. I know it's getting late and staff adequately explained what's going on here, but just wanted to provide some further detail on behalf of the applicant. Again, this is a rezoning and map amendment, and of course, the necessary corresponding countywide plan map amendment. The goal is to bring this property into conformity from a zoning perspective with what the actual longstanding use of it has been, and also to reflect the surrounding area's use, because it's a very commercial area, of course, it's US Highway nineteen. I have some, this is a close-up, again, you just saw this, I've circled the parcel in blue, but you can see there's a lot of irregularity and some holdout industrial parcels in an area that's simply not industrial. Here's an aerial of the surrounding area, as you can see, there's Lowe's, Lukens, you know, restaurants, Walmart, it's highly commercialized, even some commercial recreation uses. So, industrial uses simply aren't compatible, and the current use of the site is, or was a furniture store. It was under a conditional use permit, which has since expired. So, we would either be coming before you to have another conditional use permit for any conceivable use in the future, because it's not gonna be used as industrial, it just can't be, or we just clean up the zoning, which is why we're here. This is kind of a zoomed-out view, so you can see this whole commercial corridor, the site is up in the top. On the left-hand side is the zoning, and on the right-hand side is the countywide plan map. Again, you can just see the highway business and retail services categories predominate on the western side of US nineteen, and it's, industrial is really not, it doesn't reflect the actual state of this area. Compare this to further in the north, just above Spruce Street, where there is actual industrial use, like light manufacturing, distribution, packaging, printing. And so, these, the zoning and the countywide plan map and the map reflect what is actually going on here. But this whole area is very much separated from the highway business district by Spruce Street. Since, you know, the existing building is gonna remain on the site, it's not rezoning, it's not gonna suddenly create a non-conforming structure here. We did the measurements, all the dimensional requirements and the minimums and the maximums are met and satisfied, all the setbacks are satisfied. So, you know, maybe, we don't know if anybody in the future would change that, but of course, right now, there's not gonna be a non-conforming structure. And the permitted uses, again, the highway business district simply reflects the type of uses that are in the surrounding area. As you can see, the permitted uses, for example, some of the ones in the industrial restricted district are not what is reflected in the actual use of the property historically or the surrounding area. And for anybody who may have been concerned at some point that this would open this parcel up to residential uses, multifamily can only be a conditional use. So, again, this is something that would require another public hearing that would come before this board. And as staff mentioned, we did have a question from one of the Planning and Zoning Board members about adult use businesses. Although those are uses that are permitted by right under the highway business district, they're heavily regulated by section fifty-four of the city code. There's also an apartment complex less than five hundred feet away from the site, and the code doesn't allow adult uses within five hundred feet of residential land use. And I've told that there's also a cemetery nearby that would also prohibit that. Future land use designation, same thing, again, commercial general simply is, reflects the nature of what's going on in this area, industrial limited does not. And again, same thing with the countywide plan map. As staff mentioned, the countywide conversion criteria are very specific when going from employment to anything else. So, you know, we are looking at the, the ability of the retail and services category to provide employment, viable employment opportunities, or just viable opportunities in general. This site is too small to isolate. in general. This site is too small, too isolated from any industrial uses. There's not adequate parking or, you know, the ability for floor ratio to have employment-type uses that are allowed in the employment category. So, the site is much more viable as a retail and services map category. The site is small, as I said. It's .61 acres. The historic use of the site is retail and commercial, and the entire area is heavily commercialized. And there aren't any really industrial-focused transportation, like ports or airports nearby, whereas US Highway 19 is this highly commercial corridor. So, the existing infrastructure is much more appropriate for retail and services than for industrial. And staff adequately, of course, explained the rezoning standards. What we're asking for is consistent with the future land use category requesting. The permitted uses that are going to be permitted in the highway business category are compatible with what's already on-site and what's in the surrounding area. And since this is the pattern of development in the area, it's not going to have an additional impact on the area that would be negative. It will just continue on as it has. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Just a quick one. Does the property owner have someone in mind that they're looking at leases for, or is this just trying to open up the applicant pool further?
They're actually under, sorry. They're actually under contract to sell it to, so that's why it's been vacant for about six months, but the end user, don't know who it'll be, but it's a contract for retail and commercial use. So, part of why we're here is because they don't want to buy it, like, as a commercial property if it's not zoned
Okay.
for commercial use.
Understood. And is that like an end user that has it under contract, or like a REIT or something like that?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Does the applicant have any other presentation? Any other witnesses? No. Okay. All right. So, let's, Mayor, I guess we can go to the public, then?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone in the public would like to speak? Please step forward. Sir, were you sworn in earlier?
Uh, no.
Raise your right hand, and be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Alexander Thorsonson. I live at 10065 Addison Way, Apartment 7303, Seminole, Florida 33772. As I began to state earlier, I'm a student in public policy and administration at St. Petersburg College. I currently work for the City of Clearwater. I'm originally, originally from Norway, but I've lived in Pinellas County most of my life. I take an interest in Tarpon Springs, because it's an area that I love, even though I don't live here. I, every time when I have guests come from out of town, I take them down here to look at the area. And recently, I took particular interest in this ordinance. In preparing to speak here, I researched the property and area thoroughly, digested the application, and was able to speak to Vice Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Kouskoudis. The individual had objected, dissented. I want to especially thank Vice Chairman Kouskoudis for speaking with me yesterday and giving him, giving me his insights on his application, on the application. Mr. Kouskoudis eloquently described the importance of zoning, that zoning allows cities to take a step back, evaluate their land use, and decide what they want their cities to look like in the future, what kind of feel they want their city to have, what type of environment, and what type of culture. Mr. Kouskoudis also reiterated that what he had stated on the planning and zoning meeting on May 17th regarding the building's change to designation of highway business, with this close proximity to the multifamily residential apartment building that you saw nearby. His concern being that though it was a multifamily residential building, the area was zoned as highway business, which led to a concern that if there was an application for a permit for adult use, the board wouldn't be able to deny, which was ultimately his concern. However, in my research on the property, I found that Cycladia Cemetery is located within 1,000 feet of the property, and pursuant to Article 4, Section 5410A, this wouldn't allow the establishment of adult use regardless of the residential property and the confusion over it being a highway business. So, that shouldn't really be a concern. Outside of that, I don't really see any concerns with the property. I think this is a total no-brainer, changing the designation to something that it should be, that it's already acted as. There would be no major traffic engineering problems, as, you know, you're seeing the same level of cars going in as usual. It's just changing it to what de facto has been there. Absolutely. I think this should be approved, and thank you very much to the board for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak today? Mr. Colias? I need to go ahead and have you sworn in. I didn't see you. Raise your hand. Swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Just reading over the backup material, I wanted to, I guess there was one dissenting board member was concerned about the potential for establishment of adult entertainment uses, a permitted use in the HB zoning district. Does anything come up regarding that application, regarding adult entertainment uses, and what does that exactly mean? Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Irene, did we receive any email comments?
We have not.
Okay. So, Renee, would you like to make a summary presentation and maybe respond to Mr. Colias's question, if you have an answer?
Yes, regarding the, so, in the highway business zoning district, which is what is proposed here, that is the one zoning district in all the city where you are allowed to, as a permitted use, you can have an adult use business. However, there is a whole litany of criteria that go along with that. You can't just set up shop and do that. And so, the distance separation criteria are important here, and it really does rule out the potential for this particular site to be used for any type of an adult use because of, as you've heard, the proximity of the cemetery, as well as the proximity of the existing residential in the area. So, at this point, it's really, you know, it's a non-issue, even though it's, you know, says it's a permitted use, but because of the zoning distance criteria, it simply can't be.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a closing or summary argument? Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor, it's back to the commission for consideration.
Thank you. The chair will detain the motion.
I need to cover one thing, Mayor. I just, the code requires me to read this, and I didn't do it after I read the title. So, I just wanted to say that there will be a second reading after review by the county, and this particular item was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on April 28, 2021. Sorry, I needed to get that in there.
Okay.
Okay.
The chair will detain the motion on 11A, which is the application 2122, the ordinance 2021-04.
So moved.
Second.
Any commission comments?
I just have a quick comment. Renee, regarding the, going back, I guess this goes to Ford Pinellas?
It does.
That's because of the land use?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Who is this?
Yes, thank you. Next is the item number 11B, the ordinance 2021-05. This is the land use amendment, first reading. That's already been discussed. The chair will detain the motion.
I need to read it by title, Mayor.
Yes, please.
If I could read the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. So, this is ordinance 2021-05, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for 0.61 acres, more or less, of real property located at 41680 US Highway 19 North, Tarpon Pines Associates Track C, on the southwest corner of US Highway 19 North and East Pine Street, from land use designation IL Industrial Limited to land use designation CG Commercial General, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2021-05 by title only. There will be, second reading will be held after review by the county, and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on April 28, 2021.
Okay. We still have the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any commission comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Who is this?
Okay. Item number 12A and 12B are related, so they will be discussed together, but we're going to vote separately. The 12B is a quasi-traditional, which is the item number, now we're going to be doing item number 12A, which is the application 2134, South Distant Avenue, the ordinance 2021-06, land use development, land use amendment. This is the first reading. Mr. Turner, if you please read the title.
Yes. So, this is ordinance 2021-06, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas. Are we on the zoning? We're doing the land use. The numbers are transposed on the agenda. Ordinance 2021-07, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for 016 acres, more or less, of real property located on the southwest side of South Distant Avenue between East Lemon Street and East Boyer Street, from land use designation RM Residential Medium to land use designation IL Industrial Limited, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. That was, that was the reading of ordinance 2021-07 by title only. The second reading will be held after a review by the county, and it was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on April 28, 2021. And if we're going to hear these together, I'd like to go ahead and do the quasi-traditional proceedings.
Yes.
Okay. So, here are the quasi-traditional procedures we're going to use for this hearing. This is a quasi-traditional hearing where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it's not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that's already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the Board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the Code of Wardences in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Wardences, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence in the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Wardences, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. With that being said, anyone that wants to speak on this matter, Renee, you've already been sworn in. Anyone else that wants to speak, stand up, raise your right hand, and be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, Ms. Vincent, would you like to proceed?
Thank you. This is application 21-34 for live-edge slabs. The property is located on South Distant Avenue. This is Lemon Street. This is Distant, and this is the parcel in question right here. Just a little bit closer view. This is the existing, the applicant currently occupies this property with live-edge slabs, and they've been blessed with being successful, and they need new, they need additional storage for their materials. I'll let them explain their business, but it's, it's a, it's a nice business to have in Tarpon Springs. The property here is actually still zoned R60 and residential multifamily. And again, this is another one of these unique areas of Tarpon, and I'll show you the maps in a moment. So, the proposal is to rezone this parcel from RM to Industrial Limited, and, excuse me, change the land use from residential medium to Industrial Limited, and change the zoning from R60 to intensive business. And, you know, the applicant intends to put a warehouse on the property, so they will be coming back through for full site plan approval. We can take care of buffering to the residential to the south at that point in time. Right now, there's just like an open structure on the property. So, you can see, everything to the south here is all residentially land used and zoned, and then everything up here is industrial limited. And so, this is the storage space. You've got a commercial general piece here. So, this is an interesting area, and this is kind of stuck out here in the middle of this. And the same thing, you can look, when you look at the zoning, you can see the differences on the map. So, really, essentially, what we'll be doing is making this consistent with this land use and zoning. We do think this is consistent with the applicable comprehensive plan policies. This will require, again, another change. This will be going to employment with the countywide plan, and we don't see any issues with Ford Pinellas approving that. We find it consistent with the rezoning criteria. This is a developed area. It's kind of an infill, you know, redevelopment of an existing site, and as such, it will have to, you know, abide by required buffering from the residential to the south. And again, we can take care of the, you know, compatibility requirements when it goes to the site plan process. Staff recommendation, based on all the evidence presented and the materials in the backup, is to approve ordinance 2021-07, amending the future land use map from residential medium to Industrial Limited, and ordinance 2021-06, which is a zoning atlas amendment from R60, 1 and 2 Family Residential, to Intensive Business. We have received one letter of support, and that was from the owner of the mini-storage directly to the northwest of the site. Planning and zoning board did review this on May 17th. They did recommend approval unanimously, and we've had no additional public correspondence or public comment on this application. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the commission? No? No? Okay.
No.
All right, thank you very much. So, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Sure.
Okay. Sir, if you'd go over in the middle?
Thank you.
State your name and address, and make your presentation. You've already been sworn.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for considering us tonight. I opened this business about three and a half years ago for my son, and it was really just a way for me to stop having to give him money every week. So, we, we started this with just some hopefulness, I guess, and, you know, three and a half years later, it's been a very successful business. We're selling wood slabs and dining room tables now nationwide. We've opened another store in Fort Lauderdale. We just opened Houston this week, and we have plans to now open Las Vegas and Oregon, and we're going to headquarter this whole thing right out here in Tarpon Springs, God willing. So, we, we're excited about it, and we'd like to put up an additional warehouse, because we need the space behind it. So, I'm not used to this type of formality, but appreciate you entertaining me tonight with, hearing our story, and, you know, God willing, we'll get this approved and be able to continue to operate here out of Tarpon Springs. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that being said, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Ms. Protos, if you could just raise your right hand. Okay. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know these people, but I go by their business. They have a beautiful, unique product, and I took it upon myself, I'm sorry to write, Southern Living and Southern Lady Magazine with pictures of your tables. They are magnificent. For us to have something like this in Tarpon Springs, I hope you approve it, because it's really going to put us on the map again. They are gorgeous, and I could see one long dais with the glass in the middle here. It would be beautiful, beautiful. But I'm sure it would cost a lot of money, but they are gorgeous. And if I had a home and was young with a real modern home, I'd like to have one, but I'd like to see one one day with the, with the decoration right in the middle going across with lights under it. I hope you approve.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address this?
Yes, Mr. Colias.
Already been sworn in.
I just want to say, I love hearing about our hometown people and businesses coming up, and it's a true inspiration to see you guys grow. Inspires us all. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Ms. Jacobs, did we receive any emails on this application?
We have not.
Okay. So, Renee, would you like to summarize?
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Sir, do you have anything else that you wanted to say to summarize?
Sir, thank you.
Okay. All right. Mayor, it's back to the commission for consideration.
Thank you. Mrs. Tresh, you mentioned that they are reversed on the agenda?
Yeah, the numbers are reversed. The land use amendment is 2021-07. That's what I read.
Okay.
It's marked as '06 on the agenda, so it's '07 that we're considering right now.
Okay. The chair will detain the motion on the ordinance 2021-07.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any commission comments? You're none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Who is this?
Yes. Also need a motion for the ordinance, excuse me, the ordinance 2021-06. If you please read the title first.
Yes, Mayor. This is ordinance 2021-06, an ordinance to the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for 0.16 acres, more or less, of real property located on the west side of South Distant Avenue between East Lemon Street and East Boyer Street, from zoning designation R60, 1 and 2 Family Residential, to zoning designation IB, Intensive Business, providing for findings and provide an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2021-07. That was the first reading of ordinance 2021-06 by title only. The second reading will be held after review by the county. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on April 28, 2021.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Are there any commission comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Next is item number 13, resolution 2021-30, the application 21-35, conditional use for short-term rental at 12 West Orange Street. This is quasi-traditional, city attorney.
Mayor, this is resolution, resolution 2021-30, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 21-35, requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a seasonal short-term residential rental at 12 West Orange Street, located in the north, north side of West Orange Street between North Pinellas Avenue and Grand Boulevard and the T5D District of the Special Area Plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. The quasi-traditional proceedings are as follows, or procedures are as follows. This is a quasi-traditional proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-traditional rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-traditional hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-traditional hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria containing the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence that, at this hearing, that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Anyone that's gonna speak on this matter that has not already been sworn in, if you can stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath? I don't see anybody. So we'll go ahead and proceed with staff presentation.
Thank you. This is application 21-35. This is a conditional use application for a short-term rental for property at 12 West Orange Street. This is the property in question. This is Orange, this is Pinellas Avenue. It's a small property. It's existing, existing home in the historic district, built in approximately 1910. It is located in the T5D North Pinellas Avenue Transit District, which is really a mixed-use, even more commercially oriented district within the Special Area Plan. The current use of the property is an office. Under the conditional, conditional use review criteria, we do not find any, any issues with the review criteria, especially in light of its designation with the, inside the, the Special Area Plan in the T5D Transit District. This is the house in question, and this is what the current survey looks like. Again, we don't find any, any, any issues with the review criteria in terms of appropriateness to the area, ability to serve the property, or compatibility. This is an interesting slide. So this is the property in question. These, this is hard to see on the overhead, but this property and this property and this one are existing approved short-term rentals, and then you will be having two more coming to the board in the next month for these two properties as well, requesting short-term rentals. So it seems to be gaining some steam in this area. And again, the review, the review criteria, I won't go into these in depth, but we do find that, from the review criteria, that it's consistent. Staff recommendation is to, and I will read these into the record, we do have four conditions of approval with the resolution. We do recommend approval. Condition number one is the property shall remain a single-family residence rented as a single living unit. Two, the change of use from general office space to a residential dwelling shall require compliance with the National Fire Prevention Association 101 Life Safety Code, Chapter 24, regarding the number and means of escape and the installation of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Number three, a minimum of one fire extinguisher shall be provided on each occupied floor. Each extinguisher shall be conspicuously mounted, maintained, and inspected annually in accordance with NFPA 10, standard for portable fire extinguishers, and the applicant shall obtain and maintain a City of Tarpon Springs business tax receipt for the, for the use. And if the tax receipt lapses for more than six months, then a new review of the conditional use would be required. We did advertise this in accordance with our, requirements of our code. We've had no public comments or written correspondence. Planning and zoning board reviewed this on May 17th and did recommend approval, and one board member did accuse himself. With that, I will stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none. Is the applicant here tonight? I didn't see anybody stand up.
I guess not. And I, we specifically told, asked them to be here, but oh.
So is there anyone from the public that would like to address this application? Ms. Protos, you've already been sworn in.
Well, I need some clarification, Mayor Alahuzis. We rejected something like this on Grand Boulevard a few months ago, across from the church that used to be on Grand Boulevard. We said no to them. Now, we have this house wanting short-term rental. Of course, it's residential on Orange Street. It's the old Manuel Johnson House. So how can we justify not letting them have it on Grand Boulevard, and we're gonna have it here? I mean, do we need to start looking at all these areas and say yes or no? Because we've rejected two. One was the little house called the St. Michael's on Grand Boulevard, and there was another one. And now we're coming up with this today. I don't know who owns it, but this came into my mind, and we need to clarify this because what's good for one is good for the other person, too. We gotta make sure what we're doing. Two houses, Mayor and city attorney, were turned down, and now we're doing this one. Are we getting ourselves in some kind of trouble here? I think we are.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on the application? Mr. Eisner? I don't think you were sworn in, were you?
No.
If you could raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. You swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So I tend to agree with the last speaker. I don't understand the difference between possibly, we have restrictions on Airbnb, and this is a short-term rental as well. Where is the correlation between the two? Are we gonna be having to make decisions on each and every property where somebody comes up? I don't even know what a definition of a short-term rental is. Is that six months? Is that six weeks? You know, I just think that you have to set one set of rules for the whole Tarpon Springs and stick to it. So again, I, I don't know what this particular thing, I'd love to get some answers on that, but I just, I can't see that we're gonna have to make decisions on each and every case on a case-by-case basis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Funny, I think it's called Yass 595 Peninsula Avenue. I'm just concerned that the short-term rentals will end up being a whole bunch of short-term rentals, and I know there are some places who say they're short-term rentals who are, are applying to be short-term rentals, and they're already Airbnb-ing in their houses. So we all know who they are. What are the repercussions for that type of stuff when you guys are aware that they are running Airbnb before they even do these proposed short-term rentals? And short-term rentals, I believe somewhere about 30 days, 35 days, somewhere over that, could be wrong. But we all have to start considering the neighbors by those houses. Do they want, you know, short-term rental's gonna leave into this transition house? And transition house to me just sounds like an Airbnb. So does the city, you're either gonna let them all do it, or you're not. But you let them all do it, you're gonna ruin the people's residential homes next to these places. I don't know how well the, you know, the character of the neighborhoods will be. It could be little party houses on the weekends for certain, you know, around certain areas. But we gotta have consistence, consistency like we said, and make sure that anybody who wants to get approval for any proposed short-term rentals has already stopped doing their Airbnb stuff. And people on the planning and zoning board take advantage of this stuff. People on other parts of the board take advantage of a lot of different stuff within the city. So it's consistency. We can't just favor certain people. And I can't imagine you guys saying no to them, and then right next door, you're gonna say yes. So let's be consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this application? There being none. Ms. Vincent, did you want to summarize?
So a little context and clarification. So Airbnb and short-term rental are the same thing. So, and there's only a handful of districts in the city where it's either permitted or conditional. So inside the Special Area Plan boundary and in certain transit zones, they are listed as permitted or conditional, and that was purposely done when the Special Area Plan and the SMART code were adopted back in 2011, and that was like a two-year process that we went through to develop those, those plans and get them adopted. Outside of that, you know, the rest of the city, they're, it's very thin, where you could, in residential multifamily, you can apply, you have distance separation criteria. So suffice it to say, they're not allowed in a whole lot of areas. And we do look at, and they are conditional for a reason, so we can look at them on a case-by-case basis. You know, I wasn't involved in the Grand View one. I can surmise that it's a more residential area, you know, people live there full-time as, you know, and this is a bit more of a, you know, could be a transition area. So, you know, you're gonna, you know, potentially have three right there in a row, you know, that's, we'll see how the next two go when they come in. So I just, and, and just, the term is, by definition, is six weeks or less. So if you own a property that's a rental in Tarpon Springs, it's not approved as a short-term rental, then you need to have a lease that's at least six weeks or longer when you do business. And I will tell you that if, you know, when police department can speak to this and code enforcement, when we know about them, they go after them, and they, they go through code enforcement. Some of them literally can't be permitted, there's no avenue, and, and some can. So with that, I just, I just kinda wanted to clarify that. I don't know if it helps you or not, but, you know, we feel that this one is, and its location is compatible with the area and should be able to operate without, without adverse impacts. And if there are impacts that come up, then we have code enforcement procedures for that, too. So with that, I, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, mayor, it's back to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, it was a building process in progress in Tallahassee in regards to the short-term rentals. What was the outcome for that?
It did not pass.
Did not pass? Okay. The chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any commission comments?
I'd just say, mayor, that, for me, and my perspective is that Tarpon Springs has long been a day-trip town, and it's not because we don't have enough culture, or activities, or shopping, or beaches, but it's because we don't have proper accommodations in and around the urban core. A lot of people don't wanna stay on US-19. They wanna stay somewhere where they can walk to the activities or the dining. So for me, as we continue to see these applications come forward, for me, it's more of an overwhelming reaction to market demand. And I, I think that in these areas where, you know, they're, it's in the Special Area Plan, and it has a mixed use, and it's an area where there's more commercial activity as opposed to residential, it's absolutely compatible with the area. It's not as if we're talking about an application that's in Sunset Hills, or it's in, you know, Seabreeze, or wherever. You're, you're literally, you're talking about applicants that are, that are coming forward, that are in the Special Area Plan, that either have this permitted use by right, or in which case they don't need an approval, or they're coming forward for a, a simple conditional use approval. Meanwhile, they have a, a litany of other commercial-type uses. So for me, again, it's more of a, of a market reaction, which I think is a positive thing. I think most of us want to see more tourism, or promotion of tourism, and have these accommodations in town which go a long way and seem to be welcomed, welcomed by people. So for me, this is a good thing in this given area. Ultimately, our code was, you know, speaks volumes to that. So I look forward to having more of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Terapany, that was a very good explanation. Any other comments? Commissioner Vadikiotis?
Yeah, I have a question for, just a, just a general question. I, I've asked for a couple. That map with the arrows that you had is, you, you do a nice job with that because it does tell a story. And as far as the areas that are a little more residential, which we've had some, that's where they get denied because of the neighbors and things. I've, I've asked for some kind of criteria at some point. Will that, are you gonna be looking at that in any of your code updates, or is that something that you need some help with, or?
We, we need to be careful how we tread on, and I'll defer to the city attorney on this, because my understanding is, the ordinances that we have with regard to short-term rentals are the ordinances that we have, and we really can't, unless we're gonna make them less restrictive, we can't make them more restrictive. So we can look at it, but we just have to look at it in that context. So I don't know if you need a...
That's, that's correct. And then, and there's a cutoff date, I think it was June 1, 2011. So anything that was adopted prior then is basically grandfathered, and you're protected. But if you monkey with it, then, then you need to comply with the state statute, which means you cannot regulate duration and frequency. And that's really the important thing, is duration and frequency. So don't mess with that. So...
I think what we could do, I think we can look at, we can regulate impacts. So if we want, and that's kinda what the county did. The county, basically, they kinda took the, excuse me, took the reins off, but they heavily regulate the impacts, you know, and how their, you know...
Impacts to the neighborhood?
Exactly. So there are certain things that are, that they just must do as the short-term rentals. And so that's something perhaps that we can look at. I don't know if that would run afoul with, you know, with the state legislation or not, but we can, we can look at that.
Yeah, I, I don't have an issue with the short-term rentals per se at all. I just, sometimes when we get into these neighborhood ones, they become a little more problematic.
Sure.
And if there was a little bit more clarification on what are the criteria that we look at?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Any other comments, vice mayor?
Yeah, thanks, mayor. To be clear, I'm totally for Airbnbs. I travel, I stay at Airbnbs. I was away beginning of May, stayed in the middle of Amish Town in Sarasota in an Airbnb. It was a great stay. I, I think it's, they're great assets to our community because we don't have hotels here in Tarpon Springs that could really identify with a lot of people that are traveling in Tarpon Springs. So the people that stay at Airbnbs, or a traditional bed and breakfast that we have also in town, like the 1910N, stay and spend their money locally at restaurants, and will patronize other areas where they may go back to Clearwater and eat at a restaurant somewhere in Clearwater or Dunedin. So I think Airbnbs are important also to our businesses, which I think you alluded, Commissioner Terapany, to support our small businesses here in Tarpon Springs. So any way we could encourage these and be somehow beneficial to property owners, I'm looking forward to finding some other ways to make this more available, not necessarily regulate, but also having some type of ability to, if they break the rules twice, then at that point, you've gotta, you lost, you lost it, right? I think there needs to be some more flexibility in our code and not more regulation in our code about Airbnbs overall. I think it's a, it's a way of, but whether people are making money as a business, and also it's supporting our small businesses here in Tarpon Springs. So I'm happy to support this one. Thanks.
This property is downtown, and I believe is the right location for a short-term rental. It's not the same as we had in the past. There was a, a house down on, right off Ankle Road subdivision. Can't remember the name of the subdivision.
Include Isles?
Ankle Isles, which is, it was total residential area. So this is really a totally different case that we have there. So I'm supporting that. Do we have any other comments? Not, roll call, please. Not, roll call, please.
Mayor?
I, I'm motion.
We have a motion.
That's correct. Roll call? Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Next is item number 14, the Resolution 2021 dash 33, the Library Construction Grant Application. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Mayor Commissioners, Resolution Number 2021 dash 33, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing the submission of an application for public library construction grant funds, providing required assurances and providing for an effective date. There was a reading of Resolution 2021 dash 33 by title only.
Thank you, City Mayor Jesse Carey there ready for?
Yes, well, if Carey come up and tell you about this.
Good evening, I'm here seeking approval from the board to submit this grant to the Department of State Division of Library Information Services. It does require board approval in order to submit it along with the assurances. And the Finance Department has advised that we do have in our combined library impact and library memorial accounts a little over $500,000, which would enable us to provide the required dollar-for-dollar match for the state. And with this project, we do have it broken into sections, so if we did not get the maximum grant award of $500,000 from the state, we could look at doing things on a smaller scale, like what we're looking at doing now is primarily like study rooms, interactive spaces, small meeting rooms, potential smaller expansion at the back. And if we didn't get that, we would look at doing things on a smaller scale, and just do it over a period of years, or explore other opportunities for funding. But we didn't want to miss this opportunity for this grant funding, so that's why I'm here before you now. The grant application is due on June 21st, and if funds were awarded, the, as soon as they would be available, would be July 1st of next year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, if you stay there for a few seconds, we're gonna go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none, the chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Carey, I wanna congratulate you for taking the initiative to enhance our library to better serve the people of Tarpon. The grant, which is dollar-for-dollar, it's up to $500,000. Are you planning to apply for the total of $500,000?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to come up with another 500, or?
Well, well, we, we have the 500 identified now, so the state would provide the additional 500,000. That would be the match for above a million dollars for the project.
So the project is gonna be a million dollars?
If, if we get the money from the state. If not, then we will look at what we might need to do, and that's where we might look at doing it on a smaller scale or over a period of years.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, I think this is gonna pass. I think it'd be good to incorporate our local state officials with this, to ask for their help, Mark. So if we could reach out to them and ask for their assistance in reaching out to the state for just showing support with this application. So, great job in applying for this. I know there's been a lot of grants that have been applied for over the past couple of years. Appreciate staff's effort on that, and tracking them, and really pushing for additional funding, thank you.
I just wanna wish that you get it all, as much as you want, and even more. So I think libraries are the centerpiece of our community, and it's the most important function, I think, that we've got for services in the town, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for planning on submitting, and it says enhanced and remodeled facility, and I, you ran through it, I just wanted to make sure I got it right. What exactly are the, the enhancements that we're trying to make with it?
Um, well, we've been doing this based on the public input we've received for the past several years, which is about more rooms for quiet study areas, interactive spaces, study rooms, meeting rooms. And we do have a little area in the back that's already got some concrete slabs that we could expand onto. So that's primarily it. We are also currently doing a library survey, which I hope you guys are all aware of, and we want as many people in the community to respond to it. So we're also confirming that this is this, this type of things that our residents still want. You do still have the opportunity to change it a little bit before the grant funding is awarded, so.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, next is the item number 15, Resolution 2021 dash 32, Hope Day. City Attorney, please read the resolution.
Resolution 21, 2021 dash 32, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing June 18th as Hope Day in Tarpon Springs, recognizing and honoring the pioneers and founders of the city, and commemorating the importance of the traditions that defined Tarpon Springs, and cherish the city's hope for the future. That was the reading of Resolution 2021 dash 32 by title only.
Thank you, are there any public comments on this item? Here none, the chair will detain the motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. This ceremonial resolution, as the attorney said, is to honor the early pioneers of Tarpon Springs, and I'd like to invite everyone to join us on June 18th, 5:30 PM, at the Sponges Ducks near the statue, the diver statue. We, as we proclaim the resolution, enjoy some of the music and refreshments. This is an initiative of our residents and the merchant association, and I wanna thank everybody involved for putting this event. I think it's great to do that, to honor our pioneers. Maybe next time we have that, we should have kaburma. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment? Any comments?
No, I, I just wanted to thank Ms. Lemmons, Karen Lemmons, our Economic Development Director, for producing the, the resolution. Also, Ms. Phyllis Colianis of the Historical Society for providing some information, as well as Ms. Tina Bukavales. And then also Ms. Joan Jennings with helping with some of the editing at the last minute. So I think they did a wonderful job. And then, Mayor, also wanna mention the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association will be hosting the event for us, and I, I think the city manager's gonna be finishing up a program, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be getting that, I, I just wanna make sure we get the, the widest publication of the event with the schedule and, and what's gonna be done. I think we're still on track for the reading of the poems, and, okay, and Ms. Lemmons will be handling the advertising, is that correct, city manager?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, next is item number 17, Discussion Board of Commissioners Rules and Procedures. City Attorney, before I ask you to present this item, we have close to 15 minutes left. I will ask for an extension on that, of the meeting. At least 15 minutes?
Two AM, okay. Wanna go to two?
I move that we extend to 11:15.
11:15? And roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Pani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Attorney, would you please present this item? I know you did a lot of work doing that. You've been our city clerk, Ms. Jacobs?
Yes, a lot of work by Ms. Jacobs. So tonight, you've got before you a draft resolution. It's titled at the top, Resolution 2021 dash 22. That's the number that's been, been given to this draft document. As some background, over the last couple of years, there have been discussion, and there have been workshops and meetings relative to the rules of procedure. Most recently, you had a work session on March 4th, 2021, a lengthy one. You spent about five hours discussing this and one other issue, I think. The idea here was to take your rules of procedure out of your codebook and put it in resolution form like most cities use, so that it is, it can be reviewed every year on an annual basis to update it based upon the wants and the needs of the city commission sitting at that particular time. So Irene and I took the, took notes at the meeting on March 4th. We tried to create a document, and we think we did it the way that you had asked, but create a document that reflected the standing rules as they are in the codebook, with some tweaks based upon your recommendations. In the draft that you have before you, if you have the colored one that was provided by the city clerk, I think sometime today, frankly, it reflects the changes. The changes are shown as strikeout, and then what was added is in red in color. So I'm not gonna go through it, because we've already done that at the work session, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, this was significant work on behalf of the city clerk in pulling this together. Obviously, I had something to do with it, but it was a lot of work. One thing I do wanna mention to you, too, is, is that the, the city had hired the Munich Code Corporation, the, the company that codifies your codebook, to review these same code provisions. And they had made some suggestions, and those are also reflected in the, in this draft resolution. So we've had the eyes of Munich Code look at it, and now we're having your eyes look at it. So if there are any additional changes, obviously, we would bring the resolution back based upon whatever your recommendations are tonight for reading of the resolution. The way that it should work is, is that you would have two public hearings removing the code provisions from the current code, so the resolution would be at the second public hearing. So we're gonna delete them out of the code and adopt them by resolution all in the same meeting. So you'll have one meeting where it's just gonna be a deletion of the code provisions without discussion about the resolution. The second meeting would be the second hearing on the deletion from the codebook and the creation of this resolution. So hopefully, I've covered what I needed to cover, Mayor, but I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Yeah. Mr. Trask, I'd like to go to the public comments before we go to the, are there any public comments on this item?
Guys, the 1515 Riverside Drive. I don't know if you all received it, but Jackie Turner sent a, an email, and I wish to read it in her absence. I also tend to agree with a lot of what she has to say here. Agenda item 16, Rules of Procedure, the absence of an option for engaging in public comment via Zoom is quite concerning. This prohibits residents who cannot attend meetings in person from contributing to the advancement of our community. Tarpon Springs residents come from diverse backgrounds, and they deserve to be heard. And we're comf, and we seem to be comfortable ignoring the voices of our citizens, 'cause either they're ill, injured, or they lack of transportation, work long, or late hours, or travel. Are the voices of these who have the physical and economic means to travel to City Hall going to be the only voices that represent our diverse community? Three weeks ago, I suffered a significant injury that has prohibited me from attending city commission meetings in person. Unfortunately, I'm not able to have my voice heard as the Zoom interaction capability has been removed, along with reading emails into the record. My injury has brought many challenging challenges to my way of life, not being able to actively engage in the community. It's perhaps one of the most difficult aspects I'm facing, thanks to things beyond my control. This is not the, this is not the spirit of the city that I love. Please let the voices of all citizens be heard, Jackie Turner. And I tend to agree with what she has to say. I think we should have to be more tolerant and listen to every comment from anyone who's willing to share their comments at the city level. So thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I'm gonna make this short. There's a lot of truth in what everybody's said all along about how long these meetings last, what you can say or not say, how much time do you give each individual? Well, I'm up until now. This is a business meeting that you put on. No way in the world could you go into a professional business meeting anywhere else and take the hassle that you get from the public, yet because I'm a former commissioner. They don't belong during your meeting. And, and it's interesting. Part of this problem in my mind is the fact that these extra two minutes that everybody gets, 'cause I can't say it in five minutes. I sat through this whole meeting tonight, and I heard the beginning prior to the agenda, where people got extra minutes. They had to say what they had to say. Some of it was about city business, some of it was not. But as I sat in the back and listened, some of these same people came up and made excellent presentations in under five minutes. Leads me to believe that when you open this up and turn it over to the public, it's a grandstanding move. Everybody wants to be heard, everybody wants to be seen, everybody wants to put somebody down. I don't like coming up here and defending my name because we have a juvenile delinquent running for city commissioner. Mr. Eisner doesn't like my, protecting my name. I don't know why he doesn't. He's, he's, maybe he doesn't have any respect for. See, you like, I like that, too.
Mr. Colianis? Mr. Colianis?
I'm sorry.
Do extra comments?
I would recommend to this board, quite honestly, that you take control of your meetings. As far as I'm concerned, when somebody sits up here and tells you, I have freedom of speech, I can say anything I want to, and you can. But that's usually done out on the street, it's not done in a professional meeting. I think you should start with reducing that time. If somebody needs to talk about an actual problem they're having with the city, there are options, okay? One option is, I call the city manager, if they have a problem or something's wrong. He can direct them, or have his directors call them back. You don't have to come up here and do that on a regular basis. If it's not agenda-related or city business, it should not be allowed. If they think that's against their freedom, then sue you for telling them you can't do that anymore. Remove the length of time to start with, will help you get your meetings back. I'm proud of my name. Anytime anybody says anything about my name, I'm gonna defend it, especially when it's lies. I just got a comment, a mumble, two mumbles from the audience.
Mr. Colianis, your time has expired.
Ten seconds, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, I wish you would consider removing those extra minutes.
Anita Protus, I'm sorry, my phone went off, but my daughter's time in Australia is different from here, and she's trying to make sure I went, was at home and didn't stay for the whole meeting. But I wanted to stay and hear about the rules and procedures. First of all, most communities have done away with Zoom at their commission meetings, and they've done away with a lot of things that have come up for the public to be heard during COVID. Mayor Alahuzis, you control this meeting, use that gavel hard. Remember, I broke one during the hostile issue. Because you control the meeting and what happens with the citizens and your. Because you control the meeting and what happens with the citizens and your commissioners up here, you protect your commissioners, and don't let people come and start harassing them and talking about them. It's wrong, and that's what's wrong with our community right now. We're letting them speak. There should not be extra minutes. There should not be, laugh all you want, it's true. It's true. It should not be attacking people. It should not be going towards personalities. It's business, and we have to control the business of this commission and this city instead of making it a spectacle of what's been coming up here. I want my home to have honor. It has honor. It has a good reputation, but it's getting trashed right now with what's coming up here and going on. So, make your rules, make your rules tight. If people want to say something and they can't get here, they can send a letter. You've got a computer to send something to the clerk's office, and it can go into the minutes. But if they can't get here, that's sad, but they can be heard, and we don't keep people from being heard. Remember that. Everyone has a right to speak, and we have freedom of speech, but this is an honor to be here, an honor to be on the board, and we have to keep it an honor.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I will be borrowing Annie Samarcus' minutes regarding this topic. So, here we go.
Mr. Samarcus, are you giving your time? Okay.
You know, I think it's very funny. I think it's very funny how we sit up here and we talk about rules and procedures, but we're just playing by your rules and procedures. You guys offered the minutes on the board. You personally, Mayor, let Jim Colianis attack me several times, but it only became an issue when we brought up the facts about the political history about Tarpon Springs and about the Good Old Boy Network and the rise to power by firing city manager after city manager. So, for you even, and just like we heard from Mr. Trask state, my talking of the past has nothing to do, is nothing wrong with the city business of the day and a public meeting. So, and another thing, were you there to stop the PBA attorney when she attacked me? No, you had a coerced attack between Mark Lacorice, chief coach-in at the time, as well as yourself, to use three other people's minutes to personally attack my family. And now, when it got turned around on you guys, what the facts about Tarpon Springs politics and the nepotism in City Hall, you didn't like it. You didn't like that. You also didn't like that when we started using Zoom, that you guys started using Zoom, which we just started following by your rules. And that became an issue too. So, unfortunately, moving forward at some point, might be March 22, might be in the next few weeks, once you, once you guys realize how to really reach out to the citizens, real citizen engagement, real transparency. Why don't you have these meetings run on Facebook Live so you can get hundreds of likes, hundreds of comments? Shake your head some more, Townsend. A lot of this stuff is because you guys want to hide your big deal purchases, but guess what? The Good Old Boy Network stuff is going to end. True public meetings are going to commence moving forward, and we're not going to put up with this stuff. So, just understand, we're going to have a new waveform of reaching out to the citizens. Don't get mad because you guys are losing at your own game right now. Find a way to adapt to the reality. And what's going on with Jim? Is he going to keep personally attacking me, calling me a delinquent, this and that because I'm reading his political past and how much tantrum you guys caused? And let's be honest here, the worst years of Tarpon Springs politics has been these last 45 years. We've gone over eight or nine city managers. It was seven, seven city managers out of 15 years, right when we fired Kerry Smith, okay? Theo Goss of Vaticiotes found a better opportunity when he left. We brought in Alan Posavich, and then guess what? We went the Good Old Boy route, and we brought in Mark Lacorice. So, Mark Lacorice has been our city manager for 14 years. I know you don't like to hear the truth, but guess what? The truth is the truth. I, I present a timeline of story and fact that you guys can't deny. And any more personal attacks, I'm just going to go back and talk about the city, the business of the day regarding the history of Tarpon Springs, how we are one of the last good old boy controlled cities in all of Tampa Bay area, and you all are to blame for it. Instead of being real, true leaders in the community, you sat there with the easy way out, being complacent, phoning it in, and now you don't like it. Well, learn to deal with it and really understand that we're going to be representing the people of Tarpon Springs moving forward. Now, regarding this appeals and records of proceedings, any person decides to appeal any decision made by the Board of Commissioners with respect to any matter considered in this, meaning he or she will need a record of the proceedings, and for that purpose, he or she may to ensure a verbatim record of proceedings is made. So, what does that mean? Does that mean I have to have a, someone here writing up word for word the meeting? Do I have to, why should that, why should that happen? You all as a city should be paying to have a sonographer sit here, type up word for word. That way, we as the citizens, if we have something to appeal, it's there for us. We shouldn't have to pay out of our own pocket to get stuff verbatim. So, you guys want to cry, well, guess what? We're going to press on. I don't really care about you, you know, I don't care if you give me two minutes. If I got to be here 100 meetings just to get my two minutes' worth of stuff, I will do it. So, the minutes don't affect me? You guys want to sling mud, just like you guys did? Well, guess what? We're bringing wheelbarrows in of it. We're going to tip it slow and watch it pour out and build a foundation out of brick and mortar that we told you we were going to do, and now it's not to your advantage. Well, I've never come up here and told a lie. If anybody did think I told a lie, they'd probably try to sue me by now. As a matter of fact, my rights were violated because you couldn't handle the truth about Jim Colianis, one of your best friends. So, the truth hurts, you all are going to have to deal with it, and it's going to take a lot to get me to stop coming to these meetings. I plan to make a big difference in the community. I'm not stopping until we do. I'm not stopping until we bring ourselves a true, true, professional city manager, form of government, not homegrown, not take care of my stuff, let's plan as we go, a real comprehensive plan that focuses on the city, the future, its residents and its current and future state, and we attack, we attack projects that need to be done. See how many more minutes I got else to talk. And my time is up. Thank you so much.
Do we have any other public comments on this item? We hear none? Okay, now we're going to the commission discussion. Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Trask, thank you for all the work that you did preparing this document. I know you did a lot of work to do that. I will start with the motions. There are times where with the consensus, the city manager was not getting a clear direction, and I'm proposing to use, not to use consensus, but to use motions for any I'm going to, I like to do one item at a time, so we vote on it to make sure that we have a very clear direction for our city attorney and our city clerk. Do you have a motion on that?
Mayor, Mayor, may I just, I think there's consensus in there a couple of times, a couple of different locations, and, and maybe if we could just have a broad sweep of all the consensus.
Yes, eliminate the consensus and make them all motions.
Yes.
That's what I mean to say.
Just the one section, okay.
Okay.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, I need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Since we are eliminating the consensus, do you have a second?
We should check if we have a consensus, probably. Do we have a consensus?
I'm sorry.
I said, did we have a consensus? I'll second it.
Lay down. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Next is the public comments. I have received many phone calls from many different residents, and what I'm seeing here is their opinions. Has been very difficult in many times to finish the agenda, and I'm not in favor with the support to donation of time during the public comments. Four minutes is more than enough time for people to express themselves and to provide their input and their recommendations to the BOC. If additional time is needed, it will be subject to the chair discretion with a consensus from the board. For someone who is representing a project or application, there should be no time limit. Do I have a motion with that, please?
Let me get some clarity, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, you're on number eight, public comment. So, I have a, an asterisk by, by this to comment as well. So, I looked into this recently with the city attorney when some of this was getting out of hand, and there was some slander going on, et cetera. My recollection from serving on the board in years past is that there was, we allowed a donation of time during quasi, quasi-applications for an organized group of people to be represented by one speaker. That I'm okay with, but the continued donation of time for public comments, et cetera, I'm not okay with that. That's basically what you're saying, right?
Well, what I'm saying is, when we have a, a special situation that is a, representing a project or application, when an attorney comes or a project manager comes to present a project, there should not be a time limit on that because we want to get a clear understanding about the, about the project.
I agree with that.
That's what I'm, I'm asking.
I've got some questions too for clarification. Maybe the city attorney could help with this one. Is number eight, the public comments, is that actually pertaining to the quasi? Because it's not called out differently in here.
So, it doesn't really say, and so if you want it to specifically reference it, but it could be perceived the way that it's currently written, that it'd be public comments anytime during the meeting. So, if we want to address it as to how we're going to handle it with regard to applicants, how we're going to handle it with regard to quasi-judicial hearings, how we're going to handle it, in the public comments section of the agenda, we can do that all separately.
And then, one of the items that I think I brought up initially during the workshop was looking at doing all public comments at the beginning of the meeting for all the applications that are for the meeting. I believe the county does something similar to that. I believe the city of Oldsmar, city attorney mentioned, does something similar to that. That way, it gives everyone that wanted to speak, like for instance, we're at 11:08 right now, there may have been people that wanted to speak on this item but didn't have the chance because they needed to go home and go to sleep for work or tend to, tend to the family or whatever's going on. So, I believe it would give the public a chance to, to come and speak before the board and then be able to leave and still go home and watch the meetings. So, the public comment before, at the beginning of the meeting, before we actually get to any of the applications, I think is really the best way to go. At that point, they have their time to speak. They could speak on anything that's going to be on the meeting that night, and then at that point, the public comments ended except for quasi portions of the meeting. So, I like what your, your recommendation is, Mayor, but I think we could take it a step further to get more involvement at the beginning of the meetings because we have received complaints about individuals who can't comment because they need to go home or they can't stay up watching the meetings this late.
Let me, I, I need to jump in, just so we have some clarity with regard to public hearings. There is a distinction in my mind between public comments on an agenda item and public comments on a public hearing. Any, my recommendation to you is, is that you allow public comments on any agenda item at the beginning, if that's the process that you want to use, but for any public hearings, whether they're quasi-judicial or not. So, for example, you had a land use ordinance tonight. That's a public hearing, but it's not quasi-judicial. The reason I'm suggesting that you have all of the comments on public hearings is, is because if there is an applicant and they have a court reporter here, that we have the substance of the entire proceeding all at one time instead of being cut up. The other reason is, is that if someone wants to comment on a land use or zoning matter that will come up later, I won't know what they're going to be approaching the podium on, and I won't be able to swear them in, and, and I want to make sure that all that testimony that's on public hearing issues to be under oath so that you under, they understand the significance of the, the comments that they're making. So, Oldsmar, what Oldsmar does, and I think I mentioned it to the vice mayor, is, is that Oldsmar allows you to speak on any, anything on the agenda at all, except if it involves a public hearing, and then you need to hold your comments until then. So, that, that's really where I think there's a.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If we do this where you can have your public comments on anything on the agenda at the, at the beginning, does that, does that mean that, that would prohibit public comments during that agenda item as well? Not by the same person, of course, but somebody that wants to stay till 10:30 or 11 o'clock? I mean, I, I'm asking the commission now, not the city attorney.
My understanding is, with the exception of the quasi items.
So, in other words, you just, you want everybody to speak at the beginning, but not allow anybody to speak during any of the agenda items?
That'd be correct.
That's what he, he is presenting. That's what the vice mayor is presenting, yes.
Are you all done? Are you all, are you done for now?
I, I am on that point. I'm not sure where we're heading on all of this. We're, we're tending to diverge now rather than.
I was going to try and get back to the public comment. I mean, we're going to need another extension of time, unfortunately, but if we can just get back to the one item that you were on, Mayor?
Yes.
I'd, I'd make a motion. So, and this is just as it relates to the donation of time?
Yes.
So, I would, I would move to eliminate the donation of time with exception to an organized group during a quasi, or during a public hearing.
Okay. And then they can donate time if you want?
Yeah, so like the city attorney just described, if it's a public hearing where it's a matter of, you know, a rezoning or a land use or even into the quasi, quasi-hearing, then you have an organized speaker with a group that they can donate their time to that one speaker for up to 10 minutes. So, basically, the intent of, of the donation of time that we thought from back in the day is, is what we're going to clarify now.
Okay. I'm okay with that. What about when they're presenting a project and an application, not to have a time limit because sometimes it will take longer?
I think you should have a time limit.
You should do that?
Yeah.
That's, that's okay, either way.
Okay, so I have a second.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
All right.
Can I ask for clarification?
I have a question, I have a question on that. So, you're saying for any of the hear, and I think this is something similar to what the county does, is for any hearings, would it be?
Help you for a second, please?
Yeah.
I need to extend the time, it's 11:13.
Oh, motion, motion to extend to 11:35.
Second. 11:30?
35.
35.
I'm sorry, and who seconded that?
Townsend.
Thank you.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Oh, oh, sorry.
We need to, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotes?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. Commissioner Donovan, continue, please.
Yeah, so I, I understand the reasoning behind it. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to work as hard as we can for as long as we can, but at the end of the day, I think there's nothing less fair to residents that want to get involved with the city than to be having an agenda item at 11:30 at night. I mean, I, you can't expect a working resident, a mom or a dad, to be here for five hours on a Tuesday night, every other Tuesday. So, I understand the urge to address the length of the meetings. Getting to the specific hearing thing, I think that's something similar to what the county does is, and I'm not sure if they take it a step further, where if you address a, a community leader, whether it's an HOA president or something like that, then you would allow them to get additional time, whether it's a nonprofit leader or, is, is that something similar to what you're saying? Is, if, during a hearing process?
Yeah, so as long as it's a public hearing, and like, let's say there's one designated person that wants to speak, and there's 50 people in the audience, they're going to designate that person as their, you know, designated speaker, and they can donate their time to that person to represent whatever their cause is or motive is or whatever. So, it doesn't have to just be quasi, it can be, you know, any kind of public hearing that comes before us. You, you can allow the donation of time to that organ, you know, to that person, to, to speak from an organized standpoint for whatever that group is.
Okay, so there's still the donation of time up to 10 minutes for any project hearings or, or, sorry, hearings or public hearings, projects? It's really just taking it away from the initial public comments or agenda items that aren't hearings?
Correct.
Okay.
Which, going back in time was the original, my understanding, was the original intent of the donation of time going back several years to Jim Yakov- of the donation of time going back several years to Jim Yakovin.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, I don't care what the content of the speech is. I'm not trying to censor any, any content. I don't think anybody up here is. For me, it's just about reducing the length of the meeting to be more fair at this, think about this hour right now, 11:15. I'm sure there's a lot of people that have dropped off watching our meeting since 11:15. And I've always held myself to the, to the four-minute under rule. Since I've been a commissioner, there's never been a moment where I've had an uninterrupted four-plus minute speech, you know, other than having the floor and asking questions excluded. I think, you know, if you can't make your point within four minutes, I think it's time to readdress what you're trying to say.
I, so let me understand this, and I guess you can either say yes or no. We're going, from what I'm hearing, the idea would be to limit everybody to four minutes during public comments at the beginning of the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. But then if you represent yourself, or if you present yourself as representing a group of people for any other agenda item?
Just, just a public meet, or a.
Just hearings.
Public hearings.
Public hearings, just like quasi traditional stuff.
Anything that we saw in agenda items, like 11 through 16, 11 through 15?
But not the other items such as contracts and things like that?
Such as the consent agenda, special consent agenda?
Miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, public comments in the get-go.
I mean, what if, what about a purchase of a property that's contentious?
City attorney?
Four minutes. Right. We can't be making a list of, well, actually could, it'd just be a really long list of what the four minutes is going to be used for or not, so. But whatever you want to make the distinction as, right now, the way that I've got it down is, is the public comments are going to be limited to four minutes with the exception for public hearings where the public can donate up to 10 minutes, give 10 minutes to the speaker of their choice.
Yeah, that's the intent of my motion.
I've got a couple of questions for clarity also. Can we clarify, public hearings, is a resolution considered a public hearing?
So it, it all depends, but I would say the answer is yes. I would always treat a resolution and an ordinance for the purposes of what you're talking about tonight.
Okay.
The point I'm trying to make is.
Excuse me, so for every, every ordinance, every resolution or ordinance is going to be?
Public hearing.
Huh?
Treated as a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say, and I agree with the city attorney as well, but what I'm trying to say, there's going to be instances that are not a public meeting, that's a contentious issue, and some organization's going to show up and want to speak 10 minutes on it. And, and I know we can waive our rules of procedure that, but I just, right now, I think, here's my read of what we're talking about right now. It's real complicated with what we're talking about, and we're not going to cure it in 15 minutes. Because there's a whole lot of other things I want to talk about tonight. Emails, that's Zoom, that sort of thing. So if this is the way the discussion's going to go tonight, I really recommend we have a work session on it or something. Do this a little earlier in the evening.
Commissioner Terapani, if you reconsidered that, I think it makes it too complicated like that. I think we should have four minutes for everything except if, if needs to be, the, if additional time is needed with the subject, the chairperson, it should be the subject to the chair discretion with the consensus of the board.
I'm willing to include that.
I think that's going to be better.
My intention was to still have that.
I remember what Mr. Yakovin, it was, but it didn't work.
Right.
It didn't work. So I think if we, it's going to complicate the issue if we're going to have just the public hearings and all that. Let's just do it four minutes on everything, and if it needs to be, then it will be subject to the chair discretion with the consensus of the board.
Can it be the majority of the board?
Huh?
Can it be the majority of the board?
Yeah.
Because we got rid of consensus already.
The majority of the board.
So we're not going to, we're going to take out the public hearings?
Yes, completely. That's going to, it's complicating the issue that way.
Not really.
I think so.
I mean, what if we just still left in the layer of approval, which you're asking for, to say that the, with, with exception to the chair or the majority of the board's approval, you can still have more than four minutes, but you leave in the public hearings for a threshold? You're, you're still getting what you're asking for.
Right, but I think it's complicating if we give donation time to the, to the public hearings.
Okay, so it's just four minutes?
On everything?
With exception to whether the, the board approves it as a majority?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I will continue a second time.
All right, okay.
If there's no more comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
No.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Public comments, it should be for items related to the city business. Do not need for someone who thinks what happened 20 years ago with the city manager or the board of commissioners at that time. Public comments, it should be current events. I've received many phone calls from many residents and they are very disappointed, very disgusted and angry with the public comments that we have during the meetings with the last year. And I agree with the recommendation and the legal advice that we received from the city attorney, Mr. Jello, in the last meeting, and she stated that is the purview of the board. Traditionally, public comments for items not on the agenda that are related to the city business, certainly with the city civility code, personal tax, are unacceptable, even as a public comments regardless of what it's all about. And that was the comment that was made by the city attorney, Mr. Jello, and I agree with that. So, any comments on that?
That was Mr. Trast that made that?
No, Mr. Jello, in the last meeting. You were present.
You're on eight, what, Mayor? Eight A, eight B?
Well, that's, it should be part of the public comments.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But it's not on there.
I got you.
May I ask the city attorney, how does this fit in with the public forum doctrine? Is that consistent with that?
So the answer is probably. It all depends on how far it reaches, how far, how, how far the mayor is going to treat it as reaching, but if you want to get the business of the day done, the comments should be directly related to city business and nothing other than city business. But someone is going to have to make the determination, is it city business or not? The public may think it's very much city business that they're talking about.
Tom, I'm sorry, Mr. Trast, current city business?
It, it wouldn't matter, in my mind.
What about city business 20 years ago?
Yeah, well, that's just it. Someone may say, be talking about something that's 20 years ago. Here's an example of what I don't want to happen today and today's commission moving forward based upon some activity that occurred 20 years ago. So I think it may be relevant at some point. So I would be very careful to limit that, so.
Yes.
Okay.
You answered my question, thank you.
Okay.
What if we just say they should be on the current events?
See, I don't think that you really want to go there. I, I think that what they may think is a current event and what you may think is a current event are two different things. So what we're doing is, is we're making a determination as to the speech that they're making or speech that they're giving is relevant or not relevant or current or not current, and we really shouldn't be doing that. I would be concerned that there would be a challenge. So that's why it's not been in the, in the rules before. I'm not aware of any other set of rules where, in any of the cities that I represent that has anything to do with the content of the speech. And so I would caution you on that.
I don't, I don't think we should address the content of the speech at all. There's too much gray area. There's, I don't, I don't, one, I don't want to tell anybody what they can and can't say, but two, I mean, you know, what's, what's unprofessional speech? Is it calling somebody a bad word or is it insinuating that them and their families corrupt? I mean, I would rather somebody call me a bad word than, than the latter. I mean, I don't want to step on your toes to run the meeting. I, I think you're well within your rights to run the meeting how you see fit as the mayor. I just think as far as this document goes, I don't, I don't want to address the content of speech.
Well, I still think it's necessary. Do I have a motion for that?
I just need to understand how that would be defined further. It would just be the business of the day, current events? Help me understand it a little bit more.
City attorney, what would be the best way to, to word that if we want to put that on our rules and procedures?
Yeah, see, I don't think it should be in there at all, Mayor. I think that you can probably address it with regard to limiting it to four minutes, and that would solve most of your problem, especially if you're going to allow them to speak for four minutes on any agenda item that's going to appear at the meeting. So they may spend one minute on consents, or consent agenda item, two minutes on a public hearing, and a third minute on, you know, some other comment, or a fourth minute on some other comment. So I think it's probably going to be resolved anyhow by you limiting the time. But I don't think that you should put anything in your rules of procedure that address the content of what they're going to be speaking about in front of you.
I guess if I could share a little bit, Ms. Protas is known to come up and share a lot of historical data at times, and it's always nice to have some background of maybe why the city has done something in the past. And potentially that could eliminate some of that information, or we have someone that wants to come up and speak about their organization as what's going on with the organization within the city. So I do think that it would be a little more difficult, although I'm not a huge fan of a lot of the public comment that's being made over this past year at the beginning of the meetings, but at, at the same time, I do think that it is a grayer area that I'd like to, I would like to avoid, especially based on the city attorney's comments as well.
Okay. I guess I don't have the support for that. I will move on to the next one. I would like to continue the meeting's format to be as it was pre-COVID-19, and I'm not in support to have Zoom meetings anymore. If a person wants to participate in the meeting, it's always welcome to come to the auditorium here, or they can actually watch the, the, the meeting on a cable TV or on YouTube or on TV station, so. I'll leave it the way it is. With that, going to you.
Do we need a motion on that one? Or we just, since it's already written in the way?
Because it's already there. Right, Mr. Hurry?
Trast.
It's, it's not in your rules of procedure, so if you wanted to add it, then, then we would need to add it, then you wanted that Zoom meeting attendance possibility because it's not in there. So.
So you don't need to do anything.
So you're making your comment that you don't want to change it to add it?
Don't need to do anything.
We don't need to do anything, right?
That's correct, Mayor.
But, but I want Zoom, so I'll make a motion to Zoom. If it doesn't get a second, it dies. I think that's what the city attorney's getting at is, I mean, that would be the.
Correct.
Corollary to that. So I, I would, if we don't want to have any more discussion, I make, I move that we allow the Zoom-type public comment to be made, which is not including in our, that we did, that we did allow during the emergency executive order that is currently not in our current rules of procedure. That's my motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have no second, the dies, motion dies?
That's fine.
That's all I have, Vice Mayor Carr.
So the one thing that I, I brought up once, and I would like to bring it up again, was pertaining to the public hearing, or I'm sorry, the public comments, that we give residents a chance to make a comment at the beginning of the meeting and not have to sit through either presentations or other parts of the meeting that they really don't have time to. I do think it's a good idea to, to try to get as many public comments as we can in the beginning of the meeting, and that's really where I'm going to stand with that one, to try to push that, because it's being done in other cities, it's being done in other types of government. It really gives the opportunity for the public to, to come and speak.
I thought the city attorney explained that when it's a public hearing, he wants to have public comments, so.
Correct. Would it be anything else that's not a public hearing, though? That would be addressed, right? So special consent, it would be consent agenda, I'm assuming miscellaneous, it would be possibly presentations, is that right?
That's, that's correct. That's how Oldsmar does it. Allows comment in the beginning for anything on the agenda other than public hearings. So that would include all those things that you just mentioned, if that's what the commission wants to do. Allow public comment on anything other than a public hearing.
And, and, yes, that's your clarification, but I have a question for Commissioner Vice Mayor Carr. But that would exclude their ability, not the same person, but anybody else that wants to make a comment during that particular item, to make that comment, is that right?
No, it would, it would be, they would be here at the beginning of the meeting to make the comment, and that would be their comment time for those items.
Okay, and then they could leave, but somebody else that wants to stay can make a comment at a later time?
Not in those items. It would only be for the public hearing items only.
Just as a reminder, y'all did, at the work session, change the, the layout of the agenda, so public hearings will start at 7:30 now. Just to remind y'all of that as well.
The time is 11:32. We have three minutes left. Then you need to, then I have a motion to extend.
Move to extend to 11:45.
Do I have a second?
What's the motion, Commissioner Donovan?
11:45.
Extend to 11:45.
You looking for a second?
Yeah. Roll call, please.
No, I didn't second it.
Oh, I thought you said you seconded.
No, I'm looking, I asked if you were looking for a second.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
No.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Vice Mayor, continue, please.
So I don't really have any other comments on this particular item. I think it, it helps, other than, other than this, it helps the public that want to make comments, get their comments out, and then they can go back to their lives of whatever they need to do, so. I think it's a good resource, it's a good opportunity to, to get more opportunities for people to speak.
Do you want to make a motion for that?
I, I have a question. I have a question on it, and I think Commissioner Vaticiotis was alluding to this earlier. So if at 6:30, you know, a handful, a handful of people make a comment about it, they take advantage of being able to do it early. Later on, when that item is actually being done, are people going to have the opportunity? Obviously not the same people that were earlier, but if somebody wanted to stay and just watch the meeting and hang out, would they have the opportunity then to make a public comment? Or would the only chance for public comments be at the beginning of the meeting?
It would only be at the beginning of the meeting, so the public comments are completed, and then we can move on with the business of the day, like we're, we need to get done.
I think it's a neat opportunity to offer to people at the beginning of the meeting, but I also don't, you know, on the flip side of it, I also don't want somebody that's sitting there watching the agenda item be presented, not be able to comment on it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I think it's a good intent, Vice Mayor, and I definitely think that it, it acts to encourage more opportunity for public comment, but I think that, being that it limits it when it gets to that point in the agenda, and we're also, you know, reworking quite a bit in terms of our rules of procedures, you know, with what we just talked about, what we just talked about, and then also what the city clerk mentioned in terms of the public hearings starting at 7:30. I think it might be a little bit too many moving parts initially, although I do think that it's, you know, a good idea, and definitely enables, in theory, more public comment for people that are too busy to stay here at the balance of the night.
That's fine. No, that's good.
Do you want to make a motion or not? No?
No.
Do you have anything else?
I've got a couple of comments. I'm sure they'll come up from the other commissioners, so I'll wait until then.
Commission Terapani?
No, I mean, the two biggest things that I had were, I mean, in addition to some, just at the end, board comments, were the, the intent of the extension of time for public speakers and the Zoom, so I'm, I'm good.
You're good, okay. Commissioner Donovan?
I think the only thing I wanted to add was just, and this doesn't have to be included in here, I just wanted to clarify for residents that get up and speak, especially at the beginning of meetings. I'm constantly, I, I like to write down their names, so I can maybe get back in touch with them, and sometimes it's like, you know, they say as they're on the way to the podium or something like that. I really like when people spell it up there. So, I'm not saying everybody has to get up and spell their name, but maybe like a little sign, just to emphasize, hey, name very clearly, address very clearly. Just because there's, there's been multiple meetings just in the past few where somebody's came up and spoken, and I, I just didn't get their last name, and then I got to go back into our meeting, and I got to watch it, and I got to try to, you know, play investigator. So, that's just an idea, is just putting up sign up there, making sure that people actually say their name clearly. But, as, as far as the rest of this goes, I mean, I, I think the residents have every opportunity in the world to make their voices heard, to help their community, and I don't think it should be any other way. I mean, you can call us, you can text us, you can email us. If it's on an agenda item, it'll be put into the backup. You can use our new online engagement platform that we have, you know, you could call City Hall, try to get in touch with Mark. You could write us a letter if you want to do that. There's so many different avenues to get connected, and I hope everybody takes advantage of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yeah, I just have a couple of items. We dealt with the Zoom thing. I'd like to have the emails sent in and read orally, the way we, we do that now, is that correct, Ms. Jacobs?
I'm sorry?
The, we, people are sending in emails, and we still allow them to be read in to the record? Do you read them into the record?
We do not. That was for COVID, and since the emergency order was lifted, we had stopped that. So, I've been forwarding them to the board until the board makes a decision.
Okay. I, I'd like to reinstitute that, at least I could make a motion, and if I don't get a second, that, that would be the shortcut to the, to the...
Do you want to make a motion?
All right. I, I move to allow for the commission to receive emails and have them read orally into the record for each of the agenda items.
Can I just get a clarification? There's, there's two ways they were doing it. If it went straight to the BOC email address, it just went to the BOC and the BOC read it. If it went to the address that was on the Zoom, then it came to me, and that's when I read it into the record.
Right, commentsboc.ctsfl, yes.
That's correct.
That's second one.
The public comments, yes.
For clarification, it would be the one that was actually set up for that purpose, the address, email address that would be set up for that purpose.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Do we have a second here, now?
And then the third, I understand. The third is the, the article, under Article Three, Number One, I want to point out to the commission, we talked about public comments during work sessions, and, and we basically said they're not allowed, but they are allowed. And they're allowed as, as long as the person gets permission from the city manager, city clerk, or city attorney. So, if you go to Article Three, Paragraph One, halfway down, it said, "Only staff members shall be included in work session discussion unless prior arrangements are made through the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney." So, if a person comes to the work session and wants to make a comment on something, then theoretically, or at least the way I'm expla, the way I understand the reading of it, and I, I talked to Ms. Jacobs a little bit about this, they could check in with the city manager, the city clerk, or the city attorney if he happens to be present, or she happens to be present, to get permission to make a public comment. That's the way our current rules are written. And I don't have a prob, I mean, I'd like to leave it that way, as long as the city manager understands that that's a possibility, that that can happen. Do, do you have a thought on that, or?
Well, my understanding of the intent was that, was that if, if there was someone going to, needed to be brought to the work session to talk on the part of the thing, not, I don't remember any time when a citizen I want, said I want to talk. It was either to bring a consultant, or bring somebody in on a proposal back in the day. I, you know, I don't want, that was, that was the understanding. Bringing someone to, to talk other than staff and the commissioners was somebody brought in by one of those three entities for the purpose of whatever the item is on the agenda, not somebody from the general public that wants the contact. So, I don't want to get anything turned down, because I can tell you, you know, work sessions are for staff and the city manager, the one time to talk with commissioners, and that's how they were intended to be. And, other than bringing somebody technically to assist staff and stuff and talking to you, you know, I don't think the intent ever was to just have a regular citizen, I want to comment on all these things, come in and, and do it. I don't recall a case of that happening.
It, I mean, I, I understand your, your recollection, but I went through the public document access, the records access, and did a double search on public comments and work sessions, and I got quite a few hits all the way up until 2016. So, they have been done in the past. We may not remember them, but they have been done, and maybe people didn't even show up to, to say anything, but we had allowed the, the opportunity to take place. And all I'm pointing out is, I'm happy with leaving this process in place right now, as long as there's going to be some consideration on your part to allow a person, or, or the city clerk to allow a person to speak, if, if you feel that they're, if you feel that their comments seem, are going to be bona fide or relevant to the discussion of the commission. Give you an idea, the other night at the building permit meeting, it would have been nice to have invited some contractors and to ask them what their thoughts were on some of these things, like the, the things with, that would not have needed a permit, not necessarily the fee structure, but those things that were exemptions to the permit, and maybe some other things that they may have had on their mind that would have been very helpful to us as well, that, that would have been simple enough and something that Mr. Powell would not have thought of. That, that's the kind of scenario.
I just see the distinction of, of us bringing those type of people to talk, than, you know, me getting on the list, the letters or something from the people out, from regular citizens that want to speak on the item. I see the difference. I agree with, with bringing somebody in that can help with the talk of the issue brought in by me, but just for a litany of the public to come in and weigh on issues on a work session, that happens when the item from the work session comes to your regular meetings and stuff. And I'll go look at the records. I can't remember a time in my tenure.
In the old days, they did, but I think it was by board exception. But, I can personally tell you, I think that we need to clarify this language, because...
Ms. Jacobs, I need to know, rupture, the time is 11:43. I've got two minutes left.
Well, I can research it. When we have the first reading of the ordinance, I can talk, let me, let me research it more.
No, all, all I was going to say, the city manager, if I, if we had something like the building permit thing the other night, and I'd say, city manager, of course, I'd like to have some of these contractors come in, you'd be okay with that?
I'm not sure a bunch of requests from commissioners to bring certain people in, I'd be okay with. But let me look at it more and look at the past, and, you know, we can talk when we read the, when we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Do some more research on this...
Yes.
...that we're talking about. That's fine.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a lot more items, or is that one, because I know, I could extend it another five minutes if we need to.
I, I don't have anything else.
I, I need an excusal if we can just extend a couple.
Can I extend it for five more minutes until 11:50?
Yeah.
Motion to extend for five, until 11:50.
Second. To 11:50?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Oh, yep.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes. Commissioner Vaticiotis, you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else has any comment?
I just have a quick comment on Commissioner Vaticiotis. I do think it needs to be clarified a little bit more in the language, how it ends up. I, I do think it just needs some further clarification, so.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm getting at. It's in there, the way I interpret it, I, I had a conversation, not to put Ms. Jacobs on the spot, but I asked her, how do you interpret this, too, and then the document access, I mean, do your own search, but it does support that as well, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting, and it's adjourned at 11:45.
I gotta, I need, don't adjourn, I have, I have something I need.
Oh, you did, I thought you finished.
I thought you meant on this.
Okay.
I was just going to say that I have a annual family vacation on, will be gone in the meeting of the 6/22, and I'd like an excused absence, please.
Okay.
Motion to excuse?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusus?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
And the meeting's adjourned at 11:46 PM.